Mike Hammond, you start the recording, please.
Yeah, definitely.
I don't think I've seen you sit down on the board this time.
I don't think so, other than I have a giant screen there.
Yeah, always butterflies in the background.
Yeah, totally, right. I guess now I know how I look. That's way too big.
I know, it's huge. That's how you look on that giant TV.
I have to go around too.
How long you had?
Remember.
Why did you get braces?
I wanted to look younger.
You're there.
I wanted to be a doll.
I call this meeting to order. Board of Trustees of the Town of Unavista, can I have a roll call, please?
Here.
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 Thank you all very much. Will you please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the great republic for which it stands, one nation, united in the soul with liberty and justice. Thank you all for joining us tonight. Please, I remind you to silence or turn off your cellphone. First, we have the agenda adoption. And I am going to request a change. I would like to move items B and C to the beginning of the agenda. Nobody has a concern with that?
Of the business items, you mean?
Yeah.
So the water rate schedule and the...
We'll move those up to the first two business items. Any other comments on the agenda? Have an entertaining motion?
I'm gonna make a motion to...
And I'll give you a second, as amended, thank you. Thank you. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye, please.
Aye.
Aye.
opposed? During none, thank you very much. Next item is consent agenda. There any questions or comments on? Very none? Have an entertaining motion, you have covered deny?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Second switcher. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? During none, thank you very much. Next item is public comment. Thank you. And I see we have quite a few people here signed up for the Stackhouse Agreement. And those will all come with the, in the public hearing. So is there anyone on the list that would like to make a comment in public comment? And I see that you're... Yes, please step forward. And please state your name and address.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Sue Greiner. I live at 702 Yale Avenue in Unavista. And I'm here representing the Ark Valley Coalition for a Sustainable Energy Future, which is a nonprofit organization that is working to improve transparency and accountability in our Sangre de Cristo Electric Association Cooperative. All of us who get our power from SDCEA are member owners of the cooperative and should have a say in how it functions on our behalf. My comments are in reference to the franchise agreement between the Town of Unavista and Sangre de Cristo Electric Association, which is currently being considered for renewal by the trustee. We would like to encourage the town trustees to take a detailed look at the agreement to see if there are ways to incorporate the growing desire by BB residents for more clean energy options, for low-income and working residents' access to less expensive electricity, and for more collaborative forward-thinking policymaking on the part of the co-op. SDCEA has the highest electricity rates in the state. Their agreement with tri-state generation and transmission, which requires them to get 95% of their energy from tri-state and leaves only 5% for locally generated energy, is part of the reason for those high rates. We hope the Town of Unavista will express to SDCEA their interest in looking at ways to bring costs down and to offer more opportunities for locally generated energy. Traditionally, the franchise agreement has been, has had a 25-year term. We'd like to urge you to set a five-year term for the franchise agreement renewal in light of today's quickly changing energy landscape. Energy options five years from now will be very different from what they are today. We believe 25 years is much too long a term for the franchise agreement. Finally, we have been impressed with the City of Salida's climate action plan. We wonder if the Town of Unavista has considered developing a similar plan. Such a document would help to inform discussions of future franchise agreements with SDCEA as well as frame responses to development proposals as the town grows. Thank you for your time this evening, and I need to turn in a copy of this.
Thank you, Sue.
Thank you very much.
Next would be you, Norma. If you'd like to make a comment, please state your name and address.
I'm Norma Katie, and I've been here before at 502 South San Juan, Parkin 102. Anyway, I'm just here to progress with or talk about a little bit of the progress made with the Ukraine stuff that we talked about last time. And I wanted to have some feedback at some point about how in the world do I update the town without boring them at this time of a meeting? But anyway, I just wanted to let everybody know the current situation in eastern Ukraine where I live. An old folks home got bombed or shot at, and 59 people were killed about a week ago. And then the town near, next door, like as close as this, we go to Salida from here, the town next door. About that same kind of relationship between these two towns just had some serious stuff happen, and I don't know what it was because nobody could tell me yet. So anyway, that's just the progress, and so I'm just wanting to, I've made some progress on the installing of the bench in terms of the people in my town, in Crimea in Ukraine, and on starting up city sister cities. And then they've given me an official okay to go ahead and try this here, but it's not official in terms of, on paper, because they don't want to have everybody know what's going on. So it's sort of not, not direct, but it's very supportive. So I'm, so far I've progressed only with thinking about how to engage people in the community. And somebody suggested that I ask the high school kids to help with the Sister Cities program. It'd be a great thing for them to do. So it may not happen this spring, but it will, I'm gonna introduce it to the kids at the high school. And then I'm wondering how to do the money for donations for the bench. And so I've come up with this thing called Central Colorado Stands with Ukraine. And I'm, I need to talk to somebody here in town to help me figure out how to make it a, something that can raise money and not, not be in my bank account. So I'll have to talk to somebody. So the main thing I'm interested in doing...
Thirty seconds, Norma.
Okay, is to just update the town on a regular basis. And I'd like to have some input on, instead of coming to these meetings, how I can update you and what's going on.
Thank you. And so everyone else who's signed up, we will have open public comment during the public hearing.
Mayor, we do have, we have some, two hands raised. I'm not sure if that's tied to just regular public comment, but we could, we could check.
Yep, let's check. Mike, can you please move them over?
Sure. I have Deborah Zinnick and Rich Morrow online. I'm gonna allow Deborah to talk first and then Rich afterwards. All right, Deborah, you should be allowed to talk.
Well, okay. I am, I have a section to read here that fits with other sections.
Okay, so...
I, I don't know how you want me to proceed with that.
So you want to wait until the public hearing? Is that what you're saying, Deborah?
Yes, I must have accidentally interrupted, and I, excuse me for that.
No, you're quite all right.
Yeah, no worries. Just raise your hand again during, during... Sorry, public record, and we will call on you again.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Rich?
He's gonna be stuck. Okay, I guess I don't need it. I'm here for the Stackhouse meeting.
Okay, we'll call on you when the time comes then, Rich. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's it, okay. Next item is staff reports. On administrative?
Great to have an audience for the administrator report, so thank you all. We will be, we will be concise on our staff reports this evening, I promise. So a couple of things I wanted to point out, I've highlighted in the report some of the key updates. So I'll let you ask any clarifying questions now or later in the meeting. If, if, one of the things I do need board approval on is an attachment to the administrator report, which is a draft letter of support for the county's submission for the congressionally directed spending in support of their emergency services building project on the north end of the county, actually within the town limits. So they, they did provide us a letter of support as well for our submission for our water treatment plant expansion. And so if the board would like to sign this letter, I'll take for that to be done by motion.
I'll make a motion that we support the Chaffey County North End Public Safety Complex letter.
Thank you, Cindy.
Second.
Second vote, please. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Do you know, hear us?
Yeah.
Thumbs up.
Great.
Enamis.
Great, thank you all for that. The next thing I want to do, just highlight quickly, is we will have a, an in-person training for emergency response, specific training for the Board of Trustees on May, we're looking at Tuesday, May 17th. So I'll follow up with all through email to get that scheduled. But we'll have department heads participate, as well as Rich Atkins and Chief Bertram and others. So looking forward to that. And then I, I did want to recognize that Public Works did go a little above and beyond their normal cleanup mode at this time of year. They, they spent quite a bit of time cleaning up the sidewalks along Highway 24 that are adjacent to private properties, just in an effort to have it cleaned up all at once, so...
Thank you.
Kudos to them. And finally, we are hosting the, the second quarter intergovernmental meeting in June. So we are looking at June 29th for that location to be determined. Soon as Paula finds a really great place, we'll, we'll get that scheduled, but we will, we'll do that coming up in June. I will stop there and see if you have any questions.
Questions? Comments? I think an outdoor meeting would work.
Yeah.
Okay.
Mount Princeton.
Okay, you know. Next, Michelle. Town Treasurer.
Thank you, Mayor, Trustees. My, my report is, is on page 60 of the packet, and I have links to the various items on the transparency website. We have town expenditures and expenditures over $2,000. Pretty standard report tonight. I am, I have started the field work for my audit, and we are busy doing that. So if you have any questions, let me know.
Any questions for Michelle? Okay, thank you, Michelle.
Thank you.
Next. Chief, please, chief. You're here.
I am here, yeah. I'll just be really quick and blow through this report and touch on some of the highlights. Attach some photographs to it, showing some of the things we've done over the last couple of weeks. Investigator Amber Lee and I got to help Mrs. Negley's high school forensics class with some crime scene processing and gunsmoke towing. Our team recently did our CPR first aid research, and also Officer Jake England received the Life Saving Medal for a call that he was on. We did a super drill with the school and a reunification drill on March 9th. There's a photo from my body camera of our incident command post, which is our little conference room over there, kind of highlights the need for a bigger space. We packed it. It was a pretty small exercise, so if we had a bigger event, you can see how space would be important for us. You'll notice the cool little boarding pass from NASA for the Artemis One mission that launches in June. I've always been kind of a space nerd, and I've been following the Artemis rocket launches. What that is, is you can log onto NASA's website and put your name in there. They'll put it on a thumb drive, and when the rocket orbits the moon next month, your name will be on there. So I thought that was cool. I did that for my family the first two, which is kind of a cool thing to have, historical. Just real quick, touching on our SOPs, our standard operating procedures. We are looking at extending the take-home car radius to 25 miles, or distance to 25 miles as opposed to 15. 15 captured range of the Rockies, both with housing issues and things for our officers. We wanted to increase that distance. That will also incorporate Salida. Right now, I think there's three or four Salida officers that live here. So just giving some more options. And we've got some Markans from Public Health, which help with drug issues. Really big thank you to Chaffey Fire. There's a couple pictures in there for their excellent work on the brush fire on 319 on March 23rd. Got some photos of us with the kiddos from Autism Awareness Day, which was April 2nd, and our School Resource Officer coordinated that with Mrs. Keithley's class. Avery Parsons, that was awesome. A great group of kids and teachers. We did our firearms, Paul for Kason on the 30th. Sergeant Garcia and I were invited to speak to the Chaffey County Patriots about the Second Amendment on April 8th. Now, we got a nice tour of Fading West, which I learned is the biggest building in Chaffey County. And then we did a drug interdiction operation with multiple agencies from the 11th Judicial District, and that was last Wednesday. So if you saw a lot of cops in Chaffey County, that was why. I'm happy to take any questions. Thank you.
Questions for Dean? I want to say I appreciate you forward-thinking on opening up that range where we can look for employees and how that can work. Obviously, we're gonna have to get creative.
We are. Thank you.
Thank you, chief. Chief Bertram?
Maybe he might be stuck in areas. Get him over.
Yeah, he, I'm sorry, I enabled him to talk, so.
Oh, okay. There you go. Chief Bertram, can you hear us?
He just muted himself.
There we go.
He was there.
He was there.
He's back. Can you hear us, chief?
Looks like he's frozen. There he is.
All right, can you hear me now?
Yep.
All right, sorry, I stuck there. All right, well, good evening, everybody. Just a couple of things on here, inspection plan review process. We did meet with town staff to kind of refine our processes with permits and, and so forth. I think that was a good meeting that we had before moving forward with that. As far as our inspectors, Michelle has passed her inspector two test, and Kira's testing tomorrow, so we're excited about getting those qualifications up. As far as trading, our firefighter one academy is going strong. It'll conclude May 7th with the testing. And then we've completed our annual wildland refresher that everybody has to do for the year. Coincidentally, it's right after the big fire we had, but our board for the last several months, myself and our board director's been working on strategic plans. So we're excited that that's coming to, to completion, so we can share part of that. One of the exciting things coming out of that is two new positions that we're gonna be hiring. One is another facilities and equipment maintenance person, as well as...
Whoops. We lost your audio, chief. We lost your audio, chief, again. Wow. Just barely.
Is that better? Okay.
Yeah, that's great.
All right, trying to do it on the fly, sorry to hold you up. Anyways, our new wildland coordinator position will be responsible for running all mitigation programs, our fire patrol, all of that, and really working to get out more in the community and do more with our mitigations. This last, this past weekend, we did complete Chaffey Chips in Game Trail, and this was on the southern portion of Game Trail that's mainly bordering that north cottonwood creek drainage, which I know is an important part for the town. Our station four is still going. We finally got a date of June 27th. It seems like it keeps pushing and pushing, but that's what our new contract date is to be completed. We're excited with that, and as most of you know, we've had a couple significant fires over the last month. Spring break was a pretty crazy time. We spent six hours up on Monarch, with Monarch being closed and multiple accidents, and some of the worst conditions we've seen in a while. The two days, two days later, we had the Kelly Ranch fire, which was 35 acres, and then we've had actually a couple other wildland fires and a significant structure fire on 313 two weeks ago. So we've definitely been, been busy. Our report shows year-to-date calls of 145. That was when, that was last Wednesday. As of today, we're at 164. So we are, I mean, one of our busiest years we've had, and it's not just with the added full volume. It's out of Unavista, it's just all around been busy. So that's, that's all I've got. Anybody has any questions?
Questions, comments for chief? I will say, and this goes to all emergency services, thank you very much. You guys reacted very well to the fire. Just thank you all very much.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Next is Airport Manager, Jack.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Mayor, Trustees. My report's on page 6970. Staffing-wise, I'll get right to it. Staffing-wise, we interviewed another part-time position, a good candidate. We're just waiting for their response if they so choose to take the job. That'll help us out, especially during the summer months. Operation-wise, we're a little bit down this month. But it's, we've had horrendous winds, so I think that has a lot to do with it, but could be nationwide fuel prices. We don't, I don't know if that has a lot to do with it, but definitely the winds had a, had a major impact on our operations. As far as our overall operations to date and aircraft operations to year-to-date, we're still up, but just down for the month. Personals were up, and as far as jet fuel sales, we're up on that as well for the month. The, our projects that we have scheduled for 2022 and 2023 are on schedule. We had dibble-out visit today, do boots on the ground, inspect some of the apron area, as well as looking at when we move the fence in year 2023. There's also a government FAA bill that came out, bipartisan infrastructure bill that we're entitled to, so that extends from 2022 to 2026. Each year, we'll be entitled to about 159,000. We can save it up. We're still working on just how we want to spend that, but right now, we're looking at, we'll save up for a few years and do bigger projects rather than a bunch of little ones. And we'll keep you up to date on the, the progress of that. And then on the next page, you can see some of the highlighted ones we did. This is our bar chart, sort of explains some of the operations, type of aircraft and fuel sales. That hopefully explains a little bit better than just trying to read numbers. A little bit quick, but I know we got a busy night ahead of us. Ward and Mullen, answer any questions?
Questions for Jack? Comments? Thank you very much, Jack.
All right, have a great evening.
You bet. Take care. So next item on the agenda, your business items, and as requested, item B will be first, which are the proposed changes to the water rate schedule. The board will consider establishing updated water rates specific to water rates, system, investment, and board dedication fees. And I believe there's a handout. Everybody should have this. Thank you very much. You can see, you, you start, Joel, Joel?
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, board. So before you this evening, there's a resolution to approve amendments to the 2022 fee schedule specific to water rates, and also includes the addition of a tiered rate structure. You recall, we did not increase any water rates this year at the fee schedule in December, because we were waiting to see what the water rate study would do. The, we heard the water rate study in February 22nd from Wright Water Engineers, Mike Glade, and he presented his analysis that we had commissioned to take a look at all the expected capital outlays, coming prior budgets, ongoing expenses, historical fees, anticipated revenue streams, et cetera. And found really to cover this 2022-2028 period and those expenses. His analysis was, in order to pay for these necessary things, this should be the fees that, that we charge folks. So, so before us is, is that proposal? He, as you guys recall, he had taken all of the, separated into kind of two buckets, where we've got the expenses that the town need for the existing population, and including cartridge filter system on the gallery, maintenance, ongoing expenses of the current operations, well number three, and some things like that. And those expenses were categorized and put into any changes to the monthly water rate, including this tiered rate structure, and then things like buying more water rights, or expanding the gallery, or these kinds of things that were tied to new development were paid for by system investment fees and those expenses that new development would bring. So we took care to separate those. But he presents an increase of the base fee by just a little, for the monthly water rate, a little more than, a little less than $2 a month. And then a tiered rate structure where we have, currently, you pay the base fee and that gets you up to 5,000 gallons per month. And in addition, every 1,000 gallons, you pay what, $3.18 per 1,000 gallons additional? And in addition, every thousand gallons you pay, what, three dollars and eighteen cents per thousand gallons additional? The tiered rate has has a few different places where you still get up to five thousand dollars. Part of this base fee, but then from five, five to ten instead of three dollars and eighteen cents, you pay three dollars and fifty cents per per thousand gallons. Above ten thousand gallons, it increases a little bit more, four dollars and forty five cents and above twenty thousand gallons, it increases to five dollars and forty one cents, so the tier rate structure will help kind of make the the cost of water and the pressure of water a little more equitable for those who are using that water, they're paying closer to their fair share. And it also establishes some points for conservation measures. The system investment water dedication fee is proposed to increase. This is for three quarter inch tap, I have to pay system investment fee. If the proposals increased by seven hundred fifty four dollars. And the water right dedication fee cash and lieu is proposed increase five hundred dollars. There are a lot of tables and things in the packet that happy to answer any questions you guys might have on those. The proposal, well. The staff have put out in quarterly newsletter and a couple of water bills on the announcement that this was going to happen to that this is the proposal. And then it's been on social media, my BV. And water bills in the newsletter, like I said, so the idea is that there still would be a couple of months before this would take into effect. And so it would show up in the June billing, which would come out at the end of June. And the system investment fee would start May first for building May first, that is the addition. The amendment, I think in the resolution, that language was not in there, so we added that, and so if the trustees would would like to approve this, we'd ask to prove with that amendment, so we know when the that that fee would take in effect, so. Again, this proposal is is a proposal, if the board would like to see something different. There can be additional analysis done, again, we'd have to probably engage the consultant to to do that and see. One, if something different, or if you did not want to do this, then we have to figure out how to pay for all the upcoming expenses, so. Which are pretty vital, so, so.
I just want to clarify, since we've had recent news, the the great news that CWCB granted the town one point one million towards the gallery expansion. That was taken into account in the fee structure proposal, so if if that was a question the board had, because that's one thing I wanted to make sure we were accounting.
ARPA funds too, were also included within the study, that we were getting that.
Questions, trustees? And I did notice here that we're still carrying the senior discounts.
Yeah, the senior discounts are still there, the fire, fire line rate still will be twenty five percent. And there's still a leak, kind of a leak policy, so that public works will work with with people who have a, you know, undetected leak.
Dave?
Can I ask if you've received a substantial amount of feedback from the mailings or the social media or?
It seems, you know, maybe Paul can weigh in a little bit on this, but it seems like there were some queries as to what their bill would be. And but but that's the only, the only thing I heard of, I don't know, Paul, have you any?
We've had probably about eight people contact us just wanting to know how much their bill is going to increase.
Anybody else, any other questions? We've discussed this before, this is the reso brought forward. I would entertain a motion to approve or deny or prove as amended.
I'd make the motion to approve, resolution number twenty six as presented.
As amended.
All second.
Secondly, crazy? Further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Yes.
Westie Rome.
Yes.
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 All right, thank you all very much, and thank you, staff, thank you. Next item is the purchase contract for the Bray Allen Extension Water Right, should the Board of Trustees approve the adoption of the resolution number twenty seven, series twenty twenty two entitled. A resolution of the Board of Trustees for the Town of Beavista, Colorado, approving the water right purchase and sale agreement and authorizing the town administrator to execute all documents required to acquire the subject water rights.
I'm just excited, but I'll let Joel.
I tried to give it to you, man.
Thank you all, thank you, Mayor and Board. This is a brought before you, we've been discussing this in executive session quite a few times here and looking at negotiation and purchasing this water right on the Arkansas River. And so we have a a signed contract and we'd like the authority to direct the mayor or the town administrator to enter in this purchase contract. It's you know, the raw amount is five CFS of water, but that of course has to go through water court, and so we have to figure out really how much that would be, but somewhere between a hundred, hundred and forty acre feet or so. Depending on, you know, all the conditions and the analysis and things like that, so part of this enters us into a due diligence period, and we can uncover some of that, and if it's not the water right that we expect, there's an opportunity to to say, hey, this is a little different than what we thought, it's not the Bray Allen, it's some other water right, right, so. Anyhow, so we request a authorization to to sign this, and then we can begin that due diligence period. And have some more water.
And just for clarification, Joel, what what does that equate to for SFIs? SFEs, I'm sorry.
It's, it's hard to say. It without going through water court, you know, or we're really doing that due diligence, it's hard to say, because some of that depends on how we use it. And if we wheel it in an agreement with the upper arc water conservancy district, that has a different meaning if we turn it over in exchange for augmentation in the well, that has a different meaning if we keep it ourselves. And somehow you incorporate it in our own portfolio directly, that has a different meaning, so there's some strategic.
Lot of moving parts.
Yeah, but there will be some hundreds, but I don't know what.
Exactly. Other questions, comments?
I'd like to just say it's, it's a real senior right on the Arkansas River, so it gives us a new, a new drainage.
Gives us a new drainage, it's a, it's a little more senior than the end. There's more consumptive use than the dry field.
Any other questions? Comments? I would entertain a motion to approve to move forward with signing disagreement.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Second swisher, further discussion? Call vote, please.
Yes.
Westie Rome.
Yes.
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 Thank you all very much.
Thank you all.
Exciting times, thank you, Seth. Next item on the agenda is a public hearing on the Stackhouse Annexation and Zoning Ordinances. The board will hear presentations from Stackhouse LLC as well as staff and public comment on the petition. I will give a brief run round on how we will proceed from here. We'll open up the public hearing. First, we'll hear from the petitioner Stackhouse LLC, then we'll hear from staff. Then there will be opportunity for the board to ask clarifying questions to either or both. Then we'll open up for public comment, for those who would like to make public comment. Then we'll pose that down, board can ask further clarifying questions, and then we'll go into deliberate between the steps. Jeff, we have Gina joining us. Okay, via Zoom. Now, my understanding is she can join in the conversation of the amendments that we are going to be discussing, but she won't be able to vote on the first.
So yeah, I'll quickly explain is that the, yeah, the town has a remote participation policy that allows trustees participate remotely on most town matters, but those that are tend to be quasi judicial in nature, and so when you're dealing with the annexation, you've basically got three, three main steps you're dealing with here, and the first one is your resolution. Determining whether the property is actually eligible for annexation. And you're applying certain criteria to make that determination, that's basically quasi judicial, so she can't vote on that. Then the second step is to decide whether or not the property should be annexed, that's a legislative determination regardless of whether it's eligible or not. If it's eligible, then you can decide whether to annex it, it's basically discretionary decision. She can vote on that, and the third one is the zoning for the property, which is also legislative, and she can vote on that. And the discussion basically for all these items is going to kind of be intertwined together. So she can participate in the discussion because they're all related, but just when it comes to voting on the actual eligibility, she won't be voting on that.
Okay, all right, thank you, welcome. It was requested by the homeowners association on how they could present their comments, and I'm kind of leaving it up to the board, I would interject, we have in the past had a presentation before where a document was read, and it was just divided by these separate people in their time limit to read portions of that document. That is my recommendation, what is, what do the trustees think, what, what are yours? We will still limit. I mean, I've got a number here that we could limit to X amount of time, if you say let somebody read the whole document, or would you prefer to have those that are signed up only that amount of time, it's, you know, and obviously, we can't just have two hours worth of discussion when there isn't that many people here. Trustees?
Quite a long document. I wouldn't mind. I suppose having you read through it, but I I read through it, and I assume all the other trustees did as well. So West Wind's neighborhood has a, they have an objection, and we get that clear, loud and clear that you do. But there may be other people who have new things to bring before us too, so let's keep it moving rapidly if we go through the whole thing.
Other comments?
I guess if they want to read it, then you could keep it to the three minutes per person. If not, we've all received it.
We've received it.
Okay, looked it over.
They're gonna read it anyways, that one reading is great, additional comments, just keep them if it's not adding anything new, I'm not sure that repeating, repeating concerns have already been expressed, but enjoy are necessary.
That's always been the request when we, obviously, when we have a large group. Don't try to duplicate comments that have already been said, always. Obviously, we respect your comments, but you hear the same thing over and over and over again, it gets tedious, and yet you have the right to make that comment, so I'm not going to deny you that right.
Yeah, they they do have the right, just try not to duplicate over and over, but you have every right for your three minutes.
I will, I will leave that option in, and and while we get into this as this starts. You make your plan as to how you want to present your document, or if you do. Obviously, we've all had the document, we've all read it. If you if you want to reread it, that's your, that's your prerogative. I am going to limit to three minutes. And I have a number here, and we have people on Zoom. So I can regulate that time just by that, that being said. So that's, you decide, you all decide how you want to follow one or the other. I know one person actually mentioned that she had a section she was going to read, so at this point. Kind of have a little discussion amongst yourselves, we're going to get started with the public hearing, I opened the public hearing. And we will hear first from Alex, the petitioner.
Good evening, hey, trustees, thanks for your time tonight. I'm, you know, not really slides before, so I'm going to kind of cruise through them, but but I'm Alex Telltore, two eight eight seven two, County Road three three zero, you know, this stuff. I've been here on more or less twenty years, and I've worn a lot of hats in this this town, and the only thing I want to mention is sort of why I'm here in front of you. Why it is that I decided that this is what I should be doing right now? Now, over the past half dozen years or so, I have been working with small towns all over the eastern plains and western Colorado. Trying to solve an infrastructure problem that for a lot of them is a survivability problem. And the problem was just was broadband infrastructure, towns that don't have internet, have bad internet. Their their kids grow up, they leave, they don't come back, the towns with their and die. And so I've been working with towns like yours, county governments, regional governments on the issues that that will sustain a community or not over the past, you know, half decade or so, and and as it came time for me to choose to do something else, I really wanted to sort of stay in that same vein, keep working with public folks, keep trying to work on private solutions to public problems, and turns out that housing is much more urgent an issue than broadband ever was, so. So with that in mind, I went shopping, I took I took a look around town at different properties, I tried to swing it through for different projects here in town, and this was the fourth one that actually seemed like it was a where I could do the most, most good. So the these property, as you're familiar with, is one point three miles west of the stoplight. It's one five seven five zero, County Road three oh six here in red. And so I put it on a contract about, my goodness, maybe eighteen months ago, we bought it in just over a year ago, and and I came to start working with the town right away to say, you know, you guys have this intergovernmental agreement, what can we do on this property, what are you, what are you going to be asking of me because it's in the county? But because it's covered under that intergovernmental agreement, what is what do you, what do you need, what are you going to be asking of me so I can be planning for what you're going to ask? And so with communications with with staff and with reading through all of our great, our great planning documents, and I I've worked with a lot of communities that don't take the time to study the problems that exist, and so I just want to say thank you for spending the money on those consultants to understand the problem that's in front of us, so I didn't have to reinvent the wheel when I was trying to propose a solution. So looking at that property. This is a little map and a quick rundown of what what we came up with to 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 do the most good, in my opinion, for for the community at large, so. Some buzzwords here for you, it's a mixed income development, and we'll have a range of of incomes who can afford to live in this community and this neighborhood. And that's middle development, which the the definition of that is that it targets people who make between eighty and one hundred and forty percent of the average median income or AMI, and and the way we do that is is by selling market rate units to generate enough funds to basically underwrite the units that are going to be priced either below market or to be made more affordable for those people who are making making a lower income and who are and and basically are not able to afford a market rate. So I have up there, you know, single family homes are in yellow down there towards the towards the south end of the property. Middle is is our attached townhomes and to the north end is the apartment complexes. Middle is, is our attached townhomes and to the north end is the apartment complexes. I, there's just so much, so much that I liked about this development. It's, it's, it's. That the town is asking for, for us to follow for, to the unified development code and put in complete streets. So we have streets, sidewalks, street trees. There's a great central park there in the center. And I'm listening, like, because we're so close to downtown, you know, we're right on, we're right on the bike trail on County Road 306. There's a potential to extend the PECU trail through Sunset Vista out to this property. So we may have two bike trails that would serve as a ways to get into town besides obviously all the, the vehicle traffic heading down through County Road 306. But, um. I kind of, but I, I mentioned a few of these things and, and forgive me, I'm, I'm talking quickly because I, I do recognize that this, this may be a long evening. And so I'm just going to. I'm going to zip on through and please stop me at any point if you have questions and I'll be happy to explain further. Part of what makes it such a great property for, for any kind of development is that it's, that, that on County Road 306. Their town's water supply is actually in an easement, that, that green band on the north end of the property, the town's water line runs through this property. Sewer is right next to it as well. There's actually gas and fiber optics to the south. This thing is. Surrounded by infrastructure. It's, it's awesome. So trails, roads, gigabit internet is something I've got three minutes in place that if you chose to approve this, that we'll be able to run. Thousand megabit internet to every house and every apartment in this, in this development, really a very forward looking. Very forward looking development in that regard. So, but like, like I said, mixed income, missing metal. The permanent affordability that we're able to do, I'm going to talk more about the specifics in there, but, but. We're working on the details still here, but, um, with the chief house trust here. We're going to be able to put a number of the townhomes, make it a number of townhomes for sale at the 80 to 100% AMI. Level, which is really pretty cool. Still working on the, the total numbers of, but somewhere, somewhere between a third, a third of the townhomes is really what we're, we're aiming at for, for a permanent affordability in, in the townhomes. And, um, you know, apartments in general are. If you're not making luxury apartments, then they're aimed at the workforce. And so these, these are. These apartments are being designed to hit that missing middle at 80 to 140% AMI customer. And the key thing that I want to call out there is in that, in that range that we're, that my, my pro forma says that I can take those apartments and. If I keep the, it's an average of 120% AMI over the whole, averaged over the whole development. That I can make a quarter of them available to people making under 100, 100% AMI. And, you know, 80% AMI customer could be two kids, I would say it's two young adults making 12 bucks an hour. And they could afford an apartment in this. So it's only possible because the houses will be sold at market rates and, and this is actually a unique time because the. The disparity between market prices and construction prices right now in our community are making the affordability possible. I don't know if that will always be the case, but it seems to be the case right now. So. The last point I want to mention there is that everything will be built locally and I put quickly on there as well. As you may know, this, this development is designed. Around fading West's manufactured product. I'm working with their, with their design team. And we've sized all the lots to exactly fit their, their larger products. And if, if you go, if, if this is something that's approved, then you know, when I'm on the schedule to, to start receiving units in summer of 23. So housing is a, is a critical issue right now. And the sooner we can deliver units that will address those, that issue, the better. And so I think that's quickly and locally are things I'm really excited about. So things you, you already know about this is that it's on the municipal services area. This, this piece property was identified in a number of different planning documents of the town. It's, uh, like I said, it's on, on County Road 306. It's within the three mile planning area. It's part, it's. The town has been thinking about this piece property much longer than I have. Hiding under all that stuff there says, what do the professionals and residents say about, about what needs to be done for housing in Chippie County? And so. Couple of, a couple of choice quotes there is that the housing study says identify warriors for multifamily development, expand supply of the lots. The new chief county plan says intensify development potential around existing communities to maximize investments in infrastructure. Specifically water, sewer, electric. Centralize that development in the towns to reduce pressure on our rural areas, agricultural lands and sensitive local assets. When, when, when the residents of, of Ginevista were asked, when we did our last conflict, which is three and seven years ago, it's not as current as something, but. Housing was identified as a key thing. 70% of people said more housing is important for the future and 69% said more diverse housing types are needed. More multifamily options. So the experts and people with the. So to that end, to make the multifamily work in Ginevista's code, multifamily exists in the R3 zoning type. So. That's what I am proposing is that we've done this R3. For all the reasons that I'm, I'm going to cruise through this a little bit because Justin's going to cover a bunch of this in his report, I think. But the infrastructure is there, the transportation routes are there. When you compare distances to the, the jobs and characteristics of the other R3 properties in, in Ginevista. It's nearly identical in terms of distance from downtown, character of surrounding area, it's equivalent. And I'll just mention also that, that really the development is 50% R2 style development. Thinking about this, you know. I, this development is a neighbor, has neighbors. And. I thought I, I did a lot of good thinking about, about how to, how to be. The best neighbor that I could while also addressing as many of the town's needs as I could. And so I, that's why I took the houses and I sent and I put them on the south end of the development adjacent to. To six of the eight bordering houses. And I moved the, the especially dense apartments to the north end of the element. Yeah, I should have a map up here. So I, I chose R3 because it was a simpler path than doing an actual PUD. U D is much more discretionary and there's more conversation and this is just very straightforward for me to do R2 style in the south, R3 style in the north. So working with staff, with meeting with, I had a, had a meeting with the West Wind HOA. And we talked about the concerns that exist when, when, when anything gets built around anything else and. And what we came up with was, were some compromises where we're, we're. We're proposing to lower the building height from what, what we're allowed to do down to a lower height to limit the due shade impact. I already talked about the R2 development style that's, that's adjacent to most of the neighbors. I haven't mentioned this yet, you know, it's great. I'm so excited about this new water right that you guys are purchasing. As it turns out. Working with staff and with, with the water conservancy district here, it, it turns out that I can, that we're able to bring. 100% of the water for the development. We have that water. It's available for me to give to the town for the town to supply it through the water system to us. And in a similar vein, it's, it is also in the Arkansas watershed, which further diversifies the town's water supply away from Cottonwood Creek. Which is. John, I'm just, I'm excited about. And as a, and I guess I might, might be a better neighbor slide because the alternative development that could go on there would be. Houses on well, it's uptick that would, would impact the neighboring water supply, water quality. Last mention there is a proposing, you know, a new playground, new park, extending this trail. And while we will have an HOA for managing certain assets in the community. All of those new things will be public, public parks, public playground, public, public trail, not HOA assets. That's on my. So this is just to sort of reiterate the things that, that I've already said. But I'm, but put a couple of numbers on there. And so the location we talked about, the permanent affordability. I put percentages on here in, in terms, instead of saying, you know, five townhomes, I'm saying 25% of the, the townhomes because. If we go forward and we go through the public improvements process, subdivision process, there may be that I need to. Take out three or four homes and put in a drainage pit. I hope not. But to give me the flexibility to say, let me give you as many units as I can in a permanent affordability. I, I need to say percentages. So 25% of the for sale townhomes priced to be available to that, that 80 to 100% AMI. Customer. I, I listed it on here as county employees. There's, there's going to be more language about, about the specifics of how we manage that, that deed restriction about. Who gets sold to and it's something that I expect to have, that, that Reed's, Reed's going to help me with and that the, the housing authority is going to help me with. Same thing for the 25% of the apartments that are going to be priced for that 80 to 100, 100% customer. Whether or not it's actually a deed restriction or it's managed through a different process. It remains to be worked out, but that's my commitment to, to the town for, for this project. Early on in the conversation, STRs was more of a, more of a, a, a big ask from the town and, and because you guys have done a good job managing your own licenses. It's, it's a less an issue, but, but we're still saying that, you know, the homes, the townhomes and the, and the apartments will be disallowed for having. Short-term rentals in them in perpetuity. And this last, this last thing here about more permanently affordable units for sale, it kind of is allowed. Is that we're going to talk a little later on about the idea of kind of minimization. Should it be disallowed? Should it be allowed? And in my conversations with a variety of folks, just because the future is unknown. And. I'd rather retain the flexibility to have, to have an option for, for kind of minimization well down the road. 10, 15, 20 years down the road. I'm more than happy to, to issue a moratorium on this property for a given amount of time. But that if, if in the future, the kind of minimization was allowed and the units were sold. Commitment I'm, I'm making is that we keep those 25, the 25% of the units that were, were sold. That those would flow into a permanent affordability for sale product. It would, they would go from being a rental, a rental. Into something that could be sold to a permanently affordable customer. I think I will talk about on this slide is just that, is support the local economy, you know. This is, this is a. You know, on the low end, it's a $10 million project. All that money will get spent here in the community. Local contractors, local factory jobs at fading West. This can be a big, a big injection into our communities economy. This is a slide I, I pulled from my original thing when I came from in February of. 20, 21 year ago, I can't remember. Just a little comparison of what, what sort of was, when I bought the property, what was, what was presented. That came with these plans for these half bigger lots on this, this cul-de-sac. Street. And when I came to, came to town to talk about what was going to be possible. You know, that. They were like, yeah, you could, you could do that, but, but we would rather, we'd rather you not. That, that we have a lot of, a lot of that kind of development in the county and around and. That you'd have to be, I still have to put in streets and trees and sidewalks on my single access cul-de-sac and that. That if there's a, that we, we'd still need to be stubbing out to the west to accommodate future growth. That if you could, if you could do something that'd be of more benefit to the community than, than, than just the, you know, the 15 homeowners. That would be appreciated. So plan next to you there is what I came up with. I'm working with these great guys from Wolfline in Plona. To architectural firms who have a long history in Colorado, who have a really great. credentials in terms of creating workforce housing developments in Wren Ridge, in Edwards, their neighborhoods that I went and toured and. They had all these qualities. They had. Houses, townhomes, apartments, mixed income. A lot of their projects were actually built on donated land. Like you guys did with collegiate commons. They were, they worked, were hanging love with, with county governments and local governments. And, but that's. They were doing what I wanted to be doing and, and so I'm really, I'm really grateful for them for the plan they helped me come up with here. Yep. So these are, I've already talked about myself, the, the architects there. There's another architecture studio that's EV Studios is fading West. Architecture studio and I don't have fading West on here. I don't know why, I know, but they're, they're a key, a key component here, but other local engineers helping me, helping me do this right. So. I'm really, I'm really excited about this, this project. There's a lot of parts to it. There's, uh, there's certainly opinions about it both, both ways, but I'm, I'm really excited to have the opportunity to serve this community this way. This. This is my home and it's where I'm raising my daughter and it's where we have our farm. This is. I hope I'm able to serve community with this project. I don't know if you have any questions right now for me before I sit down. Did I cruise through anything quick?
I have a question. In some of your documents, you describe phase one and phase two. And I'm wondering what your overall timing is for this and whether there's any way to switch phase one and phase two. So that you get the apartments built first.
You know, that's, that's a good question. So it is possible to do that. The, the challenge is really. I need to sell the homes to me, raise the money to do the other things. And. That's the short of it. So phase, phase one, as is, is, is proposed to be the homes and the townhomes. Phase two would be the apartments. It would be. It's more likely there would be a single phase that would, that would get built that way. It depends on fading, on fading West's factor capacity. But it would be likely that, you know, the last townhome would show up and the first apartment unit would show up the next week. It would, it would just roll on in.
So there'd probably be less construction noise for people. Too, with your plan. If, if a lot of the construction is taking place at the factory.
Yes, yeah, the set, the sets are. Yeah, there's, there's just not that much that there will be when we do, you know, we've got to dig the sewer pipes in and all that stuff. There will be, there will be dust. There will be noise during that. Initial infrastructure phase, but after we pave those roads. You know, the set, the set, the secruiser, it's a couple of weeks per unit to stitch them up and. And they're, they're on to the next. So there will be a sustained period of, you know, of. Several years of construction. But comparing, comparing that to site building this where would it be, you know, I don't know what it would be, it'd be 10, 12 years to site build all these things and. So the comparative impact is, is as low as I can make it.
And you will be available for more, more questions after staff makes their presentation. So. Okay. Thank you, Alex. Is there anything else for Alex? Just one.
I have a quick question that really. You said you're raising your daughter here on a farm.
I'm raising my daughter. We have a crazy shipping container house and then we have a farm also, but, but it's just out, it's out on 301 and. You can buy our veggies that, like I said, and a bunch of the restaurants you probably didn't even know.
Okay. I just wondered where your farm was.
Yeah, it's just out County Road 301. It's real, we don't have any like signage or anything, but you drive down that way like the back way to River Runners.
But it's not where you live.
It's not where we live. No, we, we lease it from, from Paul.
Thank you. So now, uh, next we'll hear from staff.
Yes. You, Mr. Mayor, trustees. My particular goal here will be to. Work to convince a nearly 100-page packet. Mission into as few minutes as possible, recognizing that you all read the packet. Mission into as few minutes as possible, recognizing that you all um, read the packet. I have certain questions that you want to hone in on, so. Um, that will be kind of how I approach the presentation, I will not be going through. The packets line by line, page by page, so please feel free to ask detailed questions. What I want to do. Is start. With just an overview of proceeding. Jeff spoke to us a little bit, uh, he spoke to us, but I just want to make sure that all of us in the room. Can page with how the evening will see. We have a variety of different stages, we just completed our first stage of hearing from the applicant to the petitioner. I will present uh, over the next few minutes, you all may ask clarifying questions about of myself or the applicant. Open public comment. There might be additional questions you all have and in public hearing will close. And then we enter uh, what will probably be the the most. Vigorous discussion portion of the evening. Um, it's really talking about all the various terms, potential amendments. Um, and zoning of this potential annexation. And the reason we're talking about it here are for a variety of reasons that that Jeff mentioned. These, this is a very uh, state regulated process that can feel a little clunky sometimes. We're gonna do our best to discuss this as a single concept. Uh, come to an agreement on what that might look like, should it happen. Then there are four different actions that you could take. The first, uh, as Jeff mentioned, is resolution twenty-five, uh, which is a quasi judicial. Decision based on state law and criteria, is the land eligible for annexation, I'll walk through that. Um, that is a, yes, it is, no, it isn't, based on these set criteria and state law. So that will be the first action, that if you vote affirmative on that, it does not annex the property, simply says. Then you may move on. Consider motions on the first ordinance number ten, which would be the annexation of counter, section of counter three or six. Um, then should that pass, you may consider ordinance number eleven, annexation of the property itself. Should that pass, um, you may consider ordinance number twelve, which is the zoning of the property. Um, theoretically, if we do what's in the red circle well, and we have robust discussion and we we come to. Relative agreement, the actual votes on those four actions may proceed relatively quickly because you will have already had a. A robust discussion, if that makes any sense. Are there any questions on on these, these steps or the process itself?
Hey, Joseph, sorry to interrupt, this is Mike, um, the screen you're sharing is not showing up on Zoom.
Thank you.
Yep.
Appreciate you catching that now and not an hour down the road, yeah, great.
Uh, yes, important notes.
Great, important notes, alright. Um, so I mentioned these in other terms, but I want to just make sure that we're super clear. Um, the the terms and the um, overall structure of the annexation need to be agreed upon. Before uh, we just, we take our first action, before you take your first action. Um, and so that's why we're structuring the night as we are, so that you can have that opportunity for discussion. Once you vote on the eligibility, that's why those votes can progress quickly is because you've already reached agreement on those issues. This includes zoning, uh, so again, as Jeff mentioned, we're trying to discuss this as a holistic concept, which is what it is, even though. Under state law, we have to treat different parts of it distinctly. Um, and then again, passing resolution number twenty-five does not annex the property, it simply says it is eligible for annexation. Okay, um, so to take a brief walk through that resolution number twenty-five. The quasi judicial, based on criteria decision, is the land eligible for annexation? It, they has two main criteria, the first of which um, says that the the. Uh, not less than one-sixth of the perimeter of the area proposed to be annexed, contiguous with annexing municipality. So uh, just for helpful sake, um, I've. Showed that one-sixth is about sixteen point seven percent, because that's where the annexation maps show the continuity. So we'll take this in two pieces, as you know, this is proposed as a flagpole annexation. Um, or a serial annexation, this is necessary because the property itself is not contiguous with our mo- with our municipal boundaries today. So this section um, is shown in your packet and in the annexation agreement as annexation number one. It is a approximately fourteen hundred or fifteen hundred linear foot section of counter three or six. Um, that starts more or less at Robert Drive and then extends to the western boundary of the subject property. The total perimeter of that property is about three thousand linear feet. Um, the part that is. Contiguous with our current municipal boundary is this section right here, which is about five hundred and eighty-one linear feet. Which means it has about nineteen percent continuity, which meets that one-sixth continuity rule. Annexation number two, again, serial annexation, this would be the second annexation should the first uh, pass. Um, this, the the total perimeter of the the actual property itself is about twenty-four hundred and seventy-five linear feet. The portion that will be contiguous should annexation number one happen. Um, is the portion right up along three oh six, which is about four hundred and twenty-nine linear feet. Which means about seven point seventeen point three percent is contiguous. Again, it meets the state criteria for eligibility of continuity. The second uh, large criteria, um, when considering, uh, is is land eligible is. Sort of many parts, I I combine them all just for the sake of having fewer slides. Um, it's essentially does a community interest exist. Um, between the property being annexed and the municipal municipality that would do the annexing. Is the said area urban or will it be urbanized in the near future? Uh, is the area integrated or is it capable of being integrated with the annexing municipality? Um, so your packet breaks this down in more detail, um, but this this question is. Is this property able to be a part of town? From a very uh, logistical feasible community of interest standpoint. Um, and so as the applicant mentioned a little bit, um, but as part of. Your packet details more in the P and Z packet from March sixteenth, which was also part of your packet details, this property falls within. Uh, the areas of desired growth, which is that sort of middle. Middle map here. Um, more specifically, it falls within the municipal services area, which. Based on our. IGA, do you have some feedback on me? So based on the IGA, the intergovernmental agreement we have with the county. Any property that is proposed for development within the municipal services area must. Enter into a pre-annexation agreement if the town says so. Um, this is in order to allow the conversations like Alex mentioned. Um, for properties to, that are cert- that are serviceable by town. To actually be developed according to town standards and what would benefit town. So um, that is part of this community of interest. Uh, it is adjacent to infrastructure, not only modern sewer on north, um, but gas and electric as well. And then, uh, should the annexation go through, um, it, we have reason believe it will be urbanized, so there's. A few different points to consider on the second criteria of if there is a community of interest. So I'm I'm going to step back a moment from that uh. Correct state criteria based decision and talk more about the terms, uh, the proposed terms of the annexation. Starting with the annexation agreement. Um, this is uh, an agreement that is required under state law. And governs the active annexing this property and what conditions or terms uh, the the town um, wants to have. I don't go through all of them in the slideshow, um, you have a full annexation agreement in your packet, we we can discuss it if you would like. I call out three here, annexation fee, which is calculated to help offset the long-term maintenance costs associated with annexing this property. Water dedication, um, as Alex mentioned, he would be required to bring his own water. Uh, so that there's a net zero impact to our water availability for town. And then finally, um, the one that I I have on the screen is that town would not be obligated to pay for. Any of the public improvements associated with this development, that would be the responsibility of the developer. One other thing the annexation agreement does is it references and includes by exhibit, uh, development agreement. This contract is between the town and the developer and governs how the property is actually. Developed and then what uses are are not allowed and it places a variety of other terms and conditions on that development itself. So by extension, because it's a part of the annexation agreement, it is a term of the annexation. Again, the full uh, draft agreement is in your packet, um, but as it currently sits. Um, it contains uh, on the maximum number of units allowed. Restriction on the height. Firmly defined, it's two-story. Um, contains uh. Required setback to the east, south of the property of twenty feet. It um, currently has requirement for prohibiting short-term rentals and thirty percent of all units built. Um, and then it also has requirements that public improvements. Across the entire development, but especially on three oh six, um, be engineered and paid for by the developer in order to mitigate things like traffic impacts. Briefly, I want, I want to just remind us all of where we are in a potential overall process. Um, tonight, we're focused on this idea of annexation and zoning. Should those pass, should those come to fruition, we will be done with those topics. And that will be in many respects, the beginning of uh, all the detailed work on the part of the developer. The next stage in the process would be a major subdivision process. Under our UDC, that's broken into three distinct parts, starting with a sketch plan. Um, which somewhat resembles a master plan as proposed, but has more detail, especially around rights of way. How water and drainage would work, uh, what traffic impacts would be, those types of pieces. Once the sketch plan is done, which is a public joint meeting between the board of trustees and the planning commission. Um, the applicant would then take back that feedback from you all. And uh, their engineers and surveyors would prepare a preliminary plaque. This is a document that would start to create or propose legal descriptions for the actual lots themselves. As well as all the engineering for the streets, infrastructure, water, sewer, um, public improvements. That has to first go to a public hearing, the planning and zoning commission. Um, once it's through that, it has to go to a public hearing at the board of trustees. Um, only once a preliminary plaque is approved by the board, can the applicant then um, have a final plaque approved. Um, which again, uh, has with, associated with it a public improvement agreement, which is approved by the board. Finally, um, especially for the proposed multifamily, if there are any, um, those would require site plan reviews, a major site plan. Which is another public hearing based process that would go before planning and zoning commission. So I I sketch all this out to say that there are many pieces of detail that we do not know currently. And will not know because our process is designed to answer them later. So I just wanted to make sure that that this was um, put forward as company. In your packet, you have the full both staff packet, um, that we presented uh, to the planning and zoning commission on March sixteenth, as well as the minutes. From that meeting. Um, you probably saw that the planning and zoning commission did recommend R three zoning. Um, but they did recommend three primary amendments to the development agreement. The first is to clarify the height limit from this or two stories that it currently says in the development agreement to thirty feet. Um, for context, the surrounding county has a maximum height of thirty-five feet, as does, as would normally the R three zone district. Um, the second recommendation was to increase the percentage of units that have short terminals prohibited from thirty percent to seventy-nine percent. The final recommendation from planning and zoning commission um, was. Uh, following a lengthy discussion on what the applicant alluded to, which is the purpose of the R three. Um, which is to provide long-term rental housing to the town. The planning and zoning commission discussion very much summarized, uh, went something like if we're going to annex this property. Uh, then we should expect long-term rental housing, if that's what we want, then we should require a minimum number of units. Um, so that resulted in a recommendation to require a minimum of fifteen. Currently in the master plan, the applicant has proposed there are sixty-four apartment units shown. Um, staff has created a few additional uh, proposals or or considerations that you all can take or not take. For amendments, again, these are both the planning and zoning commission and staff, these are recommendations that you all can do with what you please. Um, in addition to what planning and zoning commission recommended, um, staff does want to see. Thoughtfulness applied to condominiums, as you all know, you instituted an emergency moratorium prohibiting condominiumization. A couple of months ago, extending that moratorium for another six months, we all recognize that. Many apartments in this town have been lost to condominiumization and then turned into short-term rentals or vacation homes. So that has led to a loss of uh, long-term housing for the town, so in order to to. To thoughtfully approach this development, we would recommend some consideration of how to treat condos. The second recommendation is that because now the applicant is proposing to bring all their own water. Um, that the development agreement no longer needs to contain SFE limit, it currently contains an SFE limit of seventy-three. If he's bringing his own water, that has less of an net impact on town, therefore, um, we could get rid of that SFE limit. And maintain a unit count. The final is to clarify the unit count, it stands at one hundred and one, uh, but does not have any language about ADUs. The proposed master plan shows nine ADUs. Um, so staff just recommends that we clarify that whatever unit count might end up being imposed. If this whole thing gets approved, that it clarifies and includes ADUs. Um, so that there's not a question for future staff or future board to wrestle with about, oh, should we have ADUs as well? So, um, that concludes uh, my presentation, there's a couple of notes real briefly. On the screen, we have two different blank slides, one now, one after uh, public comment for deliberation. And the intention for these blank sides is that this discussion is is going to contain many different pieces, we would, we would imagine. And so in order to make sure that we're all on the same page, we thought it might be helpful to be able to write these on the screen. So everyone sees what we're talking about or what ends up being agreed upon. Um, so if there's anything that you would like to. Um, ask about, or that we have clarifying questions about, we can write them on the screen, we don't have to, and then we can move into public comment at your desk.
We have a cap on short-term rentals, so even if they say that. You're changing it so that it would be twenty-one percent short-term rentals, because you were saying seventy-nine percent. That would only be if he applied for a license and there was a license available.
Correct. The, the. Um, availability or the the possibility of a potential future homeowner in this development. Would be subject to the licensing requirements, um, which, as you know, are perfectly limited, especially if you're out of county.
But I have a question, but. I would assume these homes are, from my understanding, would be for local residents generally. People working in town, etc.
Is that an applicant question?
Um, sure.
So, um, yes. What my assumption is, is that the the rentals, the rentals will be. For uh, the local workforce, for town, people working in town. for the local workforce, for town, people working in town. The town homes will be priced. We don't, there's no, no, you know, I keep. There's no good term for it. Attainable is, attainable housing is the, is the closest thing that, that seems to be that indicates that they're not going to be affordable, big A affordable, like the feds define. But they're going to be somewhat less than market rate. Included in those will be the permanently affordable ones that will be significantly under market rate. Based on, because they're going to be priced based on an AMI, an AMI calculation. The homes, the single-family homes are going to be very expensive by design, because they're paying for everything else. And so whether or not local residents can afford those or not. I don't know.
I was under the impression it was going to be between 80 and 120 AMI from your presentation earlier.
The, the mixed income component is, is, yeah, it's complicated. And I, I cannot see how, I can see how you might have come to that conclusion. So the apartments, the apartments themselves, the rentals will be priced to be affordable for a customer earning between 80 and 140% of the AMI. Yeah, which is the definition of missing metal as yellow book. The, the town homes will have, will have 20 to 30% of the units that will be affordable for a purchaser, not renter, but somebody purchasing earning that 80 to a, to 100% AMI level. A third of them will be. The, the other two thirds of them will be priced at a market rate. All of the single-family homes will price at a market rate.
Thank you.
And, yeah, yeah. And this is because something that's worth clarifying is that a lot of communities, so this is set through, the, I didn't sit there, but, but like we just listened to the, the JCP Housing Authority talking about their, their plan proposal for how they help make this kind of housing happen. And the way they do this, they raise, they raise money, they, they help defray some construction costs, they help families come up with with down payment assistance and, and point you for a second, and Ree, Ree McCullough's group with, with the, the JCP Housing Trust will be, will be assisting, will be assisting finding those customers for those permanently affordable townhomes. And will be doing similar things where they're finding, finding money and bringing it to bear to, to basically drive the, drive the cost of the house down below the cost of construction. Because that's the, that's the reality. The reality is that the cost of construction, the cost is not affordable to somebody making under I would guess under 140% AMI. I don't, I don't have that figure in front of me about where, where a person can afford a market rate home, you know, in, in town right now. Well, the most, the most startling thing I saw this week was that out, out across the street from the, from the prison in, in Johnson Village, there's a, a new development. Where in the county, there are small lots, they're nine, they're under 10th of, I mean, acre lots. They're having manufactured homes put on them and they have a well and they're on the sewer and stuff. And one of those single-eyed style homes just came on the market for 450. And so that was, that's why I, that's why I'm really glad that the housing trust is, exists to, to help create some of these more affordable products and why the, the, whatever, whatever the town ends up doing to support the housing trust. I'm sorry, the housing authority to, in their mission to create affordable housing opportunities for people here. The need is, the need is immense. And, and what I, what I'm doing in this project is what I think I can afford to do, as much as I think I can afford to do. I hope my pro forma is as good as I think it is. Otherwise, I might be in a lot of trouble.
Thank you.
In thinking about the neighbors near, near this project. These things might be covered by our building standards in general, but I'm curious about what kind of provisions we have to make sure that the lighting that's in the new development isn't going to infringe upon the darkness that the, that the neighbors like. And then secondly, to just see if there are some provisions we could make to make sure that the road is treated in some way, that West Winds Road, if trucks are running up and down it while during the construction, it might become particularly dusty, but it could be treated with some kind of mag chloride or something.
Yeah, so the the UDC or you, you find development code does have lighting standards. That requires all exterior lights to be fully shielded and downcast. And it, it says that the, especially for site plan, like for multifamily. The photometric study has to show that the light will not extend beyond the property boundaries. The, I think that those are the provisions we have. And I think that if a development were to move forward on this property, it would be subject to those provisions. I'm not sure it would be tenable to create specific different restrictions for this particular property beyond the UDC for lighting. As, as far as West Winds Road, it's a privately held road. I'm not sure what jurisdiction we would have to make improvements to that.
Or maybe they could make a provision that trucks can't go on it.
I, I can, can speak to that too. That, that was something that, that came up in our conversation with HOA and that we, we would have our, we would instruct our contractors not to use that road, that we understand it's a private road and, and it's not is not for our use. And so that, that would be our preferred method of, of managing that. I also just, just recently, as thinking about how else we could manage it, is that it offered, offered to, to sign the road. That so it's, it's private road, because it, on 306, I think there used to be a sign, but there's not a sign. Okay, yeah, so, but, anyway, I've signed perhaps, and, and if, if, if possible, like that I, I offered to buy a gate. Because I don't the idea of when, when I was told that people cut through there to get over to Greg Drive, I just couldn't fathom. Because I thought that, you know, at the end of the subdivision, it was just sort of cactuses and stuff. So, but, um, but, but people do, they, they, they do cut through. So I, I don't want to contribute to that in any way, either my residents or our construction traffic. So we would, we would make provisions to make sure that that didn't happen.
Good. I think that could make a big difference over the years of using it.
Any other clarifying questions at the moment?
306, the bike lane and is there a way to put in a sort of a bike pedestrian lane in there to keep that road more safe and, and have lower speed limits on it?
So at this point, the traffic study that can, has prepared for the annexation zoning process is pretty high level. It does recommend two or three key changes to 306. The first being moving the speed, the current speed limit, which changes from 45 to 35 on the east side of that property. Moving that speed limit further west, so that the speed limit in front of the property is 35 miles per hour instead of 45. Another recommendation is that there'd be a westbound turning lane installed for folks driving into the property. These are extremely high-level recommendations at this moment. Part of our requirements as we would enter subdivision phase would be far more detailed than engineering and studies of 306. And may other ideas for multimodal safety for traffic, for cars, all those types of pieces. At this point, that traffic study is what we have.
I got one more, just out of curiosity. What kind of guarantees do we have about the architectural style of the buildings? I mean, your, your packet has lots of nice pictures in it. Tour of fading west the other day, it sounds like they have only a few real choices. So it looks like what they make is what we'll get, and that would be fine. But what if you decided you'd switch it to containers?
Good question. But no, the, the, the product would be the fading west product. We're, we're just looking at whether or not we could take delivery of things without, without facing. Where the, where they're, you know, they're sided all the way around, but then we could vary the facing in the front with some brick or some panels that's up to, to change it up to get more character. There's also, there's also a potential that, that we could use some of, you know, for the single-family homes anyways, that some of them would be fading west and some of them would be, would be custom. That's not really in the plan right now. The plan really is just fading west. And so we've been, been trying to figure out how to, how to articulate them and, and just that, that our, our current plan, and those photos, those photos were provided by my architecture firm. And they are lovely. They're not indicative, they're, they're indicative of the ideas that we want to embody in the, in the development more so than the actual product that you would expect. And because at the time when we developed that, that plan, that plan is pre you know, we drew that up, you know, nine months before the factory put hammer to nail. So, so it wasn't clear that we were going to be able to produce a product, but that's
Thank you.
Not at this point, thank you.
That's all I got.
Concerning infrastructure and maintenance thereof. With in consideration of a flagpole and annexation. I'm wondering if particularly for the police department, I recognize it's not a huge gap, but does it pose any concerns for you?
I mean, I got to wear two hats to answer that question. One is someone employing people, it's been super difficult to find housing for our officers and things like that. So there's that aspect. There's a need from the public safety side. You know, the, talk about the roadway, like Joseph mentioned, you know, having traffic engineers look at that. That increases our boundaries of where we patrol, West Main Street. You already get quite a bit of speeding complaints. And we've seen traffic increase quite a bit with Cottonwood Pass project and things like that. So that's going to be an aspect of it. And I, I think it's fair to say, anytime you increase population, it, it opens the door for increased calls for service. Whether it's vandalism, barking dog complaints, which I know was on the agenda last time. So it, it does prompt us wanting to look at the quality of service we can provide at the current level. And we need to increase staffing. I hope that answers your question.
It does. I was more concerned about the flagpole, the gap in town, county, back to town. It's only a small slot, but I didn't know if that gap had to come back out and around to, to patrol part of town.
Yeah, I, I'm sorry, I guess I misunderstood your question. I, I'm not super familiar with the layout, but we've always had that where right there at rodeo is kind of the town limits, but all the houses that are on the south side are, are ours. So we have to go through that area to respond to calls anyways.
Then the other concern or question that's out there is just the, the definition of adequate water rights. It, it, it's been left vague and I don't, this is an appropriate time to, to talk about how senior the water rights are, just how, how, how far town is looked into the adequacy of water rights that are coming along with the property.
Yeah, I mean, I'll, I'll maybe look over a goal for a moment, but just the code reference, I know I didn't put it in the staff report. Our municipal code that talks about water dedications is in our Unified Development Code chapter 16. 5.3.6. I think part of the idea of leaving it vague at this moment is that we don't know exactly what will be built. And therefore we want future staff, future trustees to have the ability to agree to approve whatever agreement is actually penned. But I don't know if, who you want to speak to.
Yeah, the, the, I know that Alex has been talking about Terry Skanga, the upper art. And they have a, he has some kind of agreement that he's put to paper. You know, we haven't seen all the formal, the formality, the legal formality of it. Nor should we yet, okay? The, but we would not accept any water unless our town attorney approves a document, our water attorney, Cindy Cavell approves the, the situation and our water engineer approves the situation. And our town staff approves the situation. What, what we don't want, and we've been clear already with Terry and with the applicant is that we don't want dependency on project water. So from Colorado River, it has to be deeded to town, it has to be permanent fixed supply. And the idea is that it would tie in into an existing well. So tie into the system down here, so it'd be in Arkansas right as well. So it would not draw from our, you know, our sensitive Cottonwood Creek at all. And in fact, all the irrigation water would go back into Cottonwood, Cottonwood Creek. So it might be a, a benefit in that, in that regard too. So but we wouldn't do anything and it's spelled out, you know, that we, you know, the code, we wouldn't agree unless those things are in place.
Yeah, if there's an opportunity to put the brakes, if it's, if it's deemed inadequate.
Oh, yeah.
And that does come in at the, at the stage of final plat. So the final plat would not be able to be approved or recorded until this agreement is signed off on by all.
Would, would it be fair to say that, that at a high level, that you and did I go, I don't recall if the water attorney had a chance to review, review it, but at a high level, it appears to be.
Yeah, at a high level, it's like, yeah, this makes, this makes sense what we've seen, but we haven't seen all of it, you know, the legalese and and then we're meeting with Terry Skanga next week, the week after, just to, to confirm on this project is what was other water potentials.
Any other clarifying questions at this point? I'm going to open this portion of the public hearing to the public. Not knowing what or how you've decided to present, I don't know if you want to read your document. If you do, that's fine. I will restrict time to a maximum of what I have on my sheet, or you can stand up individually, read from the document, or you can make your own personal comment. So I'm not sure what you've decided, so.
We take a five-minute break, let them decide and we can walk around.
We'll take five-minute break. Come back up. Whatever it is.
Is it?
I still own it, but I didn't drive that. Let me drive anywhere though around town. Yes. No, uh, they can give their name and address when they're.
You can just. That would save a lot of hassle.
I've been looking for it.
But. I think for subset of the speakers that might be on Zoom, gonna have a little help coordinating calling names. So, um, I guess when we hear a name, if you'll help identify them on the Zoom, if they're not in the room and, uh, letting them speak.
Sure. I have three with their hands raised. So I would ask if, if you're on Zoom and you plan to speak, please raise your hand. And it brings you up to the top of the list. Helps me find you. Thank you.
Okay. So brief discussion. Uh, we have two, basically let's say two groups that want to speak, and there may be individuals that may want to make the comment also. Um, y'all have the opportunity in the right. We will go ahead and start with West Wind's. Okay. And, and speakers, please state your name and address. Yeah, Rich Morrow.
Ready? Okay. I presume you can hear me.
Yes, go ahead, Rich.
The house where the Connie reaches the town limits. I'm a mathematician and logician for studies decision-making procedures. Along these lines, I would like to share my overly brief three-minute analysis of the planning commission meeting on March 16th. The issue to be decided was irrelevance of high-density residential designation of a particular piece of property. The code for R3 says that our three districts are intended for locations close to commercial mixed areas. Near downtown may serve as a transition, should have connected streets accessible to public uses such as parks, open spaces and school. The discussion I heard centered on the town's needs for workforce and lower cost housing, not on the appropriateness of the zoning. I might add that nobody questioned the need for the housing. It is incumbent upon me to provide a few examples of irrelevance in that discussion. To talk about the town's overall need for densification was not about the appropriateness of high density on this particular site. Emphasis on mitigation. Another example indicates that mitigation is required. That implies the zoning is not appropriate. If the zoning were appropriate, it would not require mitigation. In contrast, relevant to the topic at hand, where the mention of the other three are, other two are three zone areas. The farm is one. Unlike Stackhouse, it is near commercial areas and a school, the surrounding lots are smaller. The other R3 Tri-Vista on Ray Court near Highway 306 and Rodeo Road consists of single-story townhouses that blend quite well with the surrounding areas. Medium-density homes. Since the code and the decision do not match, I see three options on how to approach the zoning issue. One, eliminator suspend, suspend the zoning code. This way the code will not conflict with the decision. Option two, rewrite the code to match the decision. If the code no longer fits the town's goals, change the code. You may need to do that anyhow, given the problem. Often three, pray. Keep the code and hope that the town does not get sued. The problem here is that courts have a tendency to pay attention to the wording of laws. That could cause problems and lead to a long delay in the resolutions.
Three seconds, Rich.
And then, okay, remember in Star Wars when Hans and Skywalker were being compacted in a trash bin? R2 saved them then. Maybe R2 can help you out here. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Kendra Johnson. I live at, uh, 28724 West Wind's Place. Um, I'm going to chat about the Chaffey County, County Comprehensive Plan. Comprehensive plans are adopted by counties and towns for the purpose of guiding future growth and development. The comprehensive plan process makes recommendations for locating various densities of residential development as well as commercial and industrial uses. We question whether this proposal is in compliance with the Buena Vista, Buena Vista sub-area section of the Chaffey County Comprehensive Plan. We question this for the following reasons. Chaffey County adopted a new comprehensive master plan recently in December 2020. And that master plan is a designation for suburban residential, which is described as, quote, "low-density residential uses on parcels near existing incorporated or unincorporated communities or along major transportation corridors." This designation may have associated uses that are consistent with the residential zone and is intended for areas within intergovernmental agreements or service areas that are desired for annexation and where municipal services may be added in the future, end quote. Note that residential in the county requires a minimum lot size of a half acre if no central services are present. According to the future land use map for the Buena Vista sub-area, the areas of Westwind subdivision, Ivy League subdivisions, and the planned Stackhouse subdivision are all shown as suburban residential. Anything further to the west is rural residential, which has large lots of over two acres. At the planning and zoning meetings on this project, town staff appropriately talked about the municipal services area of the three-mile plan. But neither town staff nor the applicant mentioned the above use designations on the future land use map. Nor was there a discussion of the vision found in the BV sub-area portion of the county, uh, comprehensive plan, which states, "The Buena Vista sub-area, through logical growth in places like Johnson Village, can promote community goals of supplying affordable housing by envisioning a mix of unit types at the right size and in the right places." Putting a high-density urbanized development in a semi-rural area is clearly not the right place. We wonder if the Planning and Zoning Commission, Town Staff and.
Thirty seconds.
And the developer have chosen to ignore the Chaffey County Comprehensive Plan, or is this just an oversight that needs to be corrected? We would urge the board of trustees to review the long-term land use goals and consider denying this request.
Thank you.
Al, and I'm going to butcher his last name. Um, he's on Zoom.
Right here. Better, better you than me.
Hi. Hello, everyone. This is Al Winsen Reed. Um, I live at 28583 West Wind's Place. Um, I want to continue talking about the Buena Vista Comprehensive Plan. The Buena Vista town staff and residents worked hard to create the comprehensive plan that was adopted in 2015 and most recently updated in 2021. This long-range planning document includes goals and policies that help direct development. The plan states, quote, "If any land within the three-mile areas proposed to be annexed in the future, annexation proposals would be evaluated against the town's comprehensive plan for compatibility with surrounding land use patterns," end quote. Has this actually been done for the Stackhouse annexation and zoning? The proposal is not compatible with either town's comprehensive plan nor with the surrounding land use patterns. Goal number two of the Housing Accessible and Affordable Section of the Comp Plan states, "Buenavista will locate new housing within existing neighborhoods." One of the policies for this goal is that Buena Vista pro, will promote new housing on underdeveloped and vacant parcels within the downtown core and provide for mixed uses. And the action item for this goal is to develop dimensional standards that will support infill development and neighborhood compatibility. The Stackhouse property is not located within the downtown core and it is not infill development. That's zero for two. And most importantly, it's not compatible with any of the neighborhoods surrounding it or even within a one-mile radius. The zoning and proposed land use intensity zones map in the 2015 Comprehensive Plan, three-mile planning area shows the Stackhouse property is R1, low-density residential. In fact, all the properties along County Road 306 are shown to be R1. By considering R3, high-density residential, the town will be ignoring their own adopted planning documents. The Buena Vista three-mile plan updated in 2021 includes a map showing the areas of desired growth. The Stackhouse property is in Area 7 on this map, which is described as county residential and is intended to provide additional residential land for the town of Buena Vista. Land uses in Area 7 are described as, quote, "residential and limited historical commercial uses are desired." Refer to Chaffey County and Town of Buena Vista Comprehensive Plans and the Chaffey County, thank you, Chaffey County zoning map, end quote. So the long-term goals of both the county and the town for development in this area remain unchanged. It is to be low-density residential, not high-density. Thank you.
Thank you.
This is Ed Boxer. I live at 28601 West Wind's Place. At the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, the reasons given for recommending approval of the R3 zoning were that workforce housing is desperately needed. And there already is R3 zoning on County Road 306. We did not hear any justification for putting a high-density residential development at this location, nor any real analysis of the negative impacts of such a development on the surrounding uses. What we are presenting to you tonight are reasons why the Stackhouse location is not an appropriate place for high-density residential development in this semi-rural area, since it fails to meet the standards for R3 zoning in the Buena Vista Municipal Code. We are trying to understand the rationale of putting an urbanized, high-density zone property in an area surrounded by semi-rural, low-density properties. This appears to violate the intent of the R3 Zone District as found in the Buena Vista Municipal Code. And shouldn't a decision, decision like this be tabled until the town completes the updating of the Housing Needs Assessment and Unified Development Code update currently being conducted? This is the land use definition of R3 is found in Article 16.03, Section 3 of the Buena Vista Municipal Quote, Code. Quote, "The R3 district is intended for locations close to commercial and mixed-use areas near downtown and may serve as a transition between lower-density residential districts and commercial or other non-residential areas. The district should have connected streets and accessibility to public uses such as parks, open spaces and schools," end quote. Clearly, the Stackhouse property should not be considered for R3 zoning because it does not meet the intent of the town's own zoning code. Firstly, the property is not located close to commercial or mixed-use areas. The closest commercial uses where jobs are located are either a mile and a half away in downtown BV or even further to the industrial uses on Greg Drive. Shouldn't workforce housing be located closer to where the jobs are? Secondly, the property is not near downtown. Downtown BV is over a mile away. If it isn't the intent of the R3 Zone District to bring more density to the downtown area and make it a more vibrant area, then the Stackhouse development is in the wrong place. Putting high-density housing away from urbanized areas of town will only fragment the town, not make it more cohesive. This fragmentation is not compatible with the purpose of the R3 Zone District. I think I'm getting close to my three minutes. I will stop here. Another neighbor will pick up the rest of this discussion about R3 zoning. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. R3 zoning on this property will not serve as a transition between lower-density residential and commercial or other non-residential areas as found in the BV Municipal Code. The Stackhouse property is completely surrounded by low-density residential properties, ranging in size from half-acre lots to eight-acre lots. The closest commercial use is the drive-in theater mile away. And the closest non-residential use is many blessings. It is obvious that R3 zoning on this property serves no purpose to buffer the lower-density residential properties from these uses. The town and the developer have already acknowledged that this development will negatively impact the homes in the West Winds subdivision. Their attempt to mitigate this impact is to propose a 20-foot setback on the south and east sides of Stackhouse instead of the five-foot setbacks allowed in R3. The proposed development plan shows that this 20-foot setback will be used for alleys, driveways and garages. And it is not an acceptable buffer. We fail to understand how this setback will alleviate the many problems caused by the R3 zoning. Note that the attempt to mitigate the impacts of the adjacent existing homes was done without any input from these homeowners or anyone else in the adjacent subdivisions. Again, the town is acknowledging that the standards of R3 are inappropriate for this location. I'm sorry I didn't give my address at the beginning, 28601 West Winds. Isolating the Stackhouse property at this location means that it does not give easy access to any amenities, including schools, libraries, parks, and other public spaces. In fact, anyone wanting to use any of those amenities must drive, showing again how this property is fragmented from the rest of the town. We understand that the development agreement is recorded, is a recorded document.
Thirty seconds.
Finding the culture and future owners to a maximum of 101 dwellings plus the ADUs. This, does this also mean that there is no possibility that a future owner can apply to the Board of Trustees to amend this agreement? If R3 zoning on this property does not fit any of the designated purposes of the R3 Zone District, then why is there a rush to do it? Can we all agree that affordable housing is needed? And it is also agreed by over 100 residents that this is the wrong place.
I'm
Thank you.
Sorry, I didn't catch that.
Did you say that? Okay, that's that.
Bet Maro, 28699 West Winds Place in BV. My husband and I have been a part of the BV community for 15 years. At the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, staff pointed out the existing R3 zoning on County Road 306, the Tri-Vista development. This is how the R3 zoning in Tri-Vista is different from the proposed Stackhouse development. Firstly, Tri-Vista is bordered by BV, R1 zoning, and County RES. The lots in the BV R1 zoning are required to be a minimum of 6,500 square feet, not the half-acre requirement for the RES properties that surround Stackhouse. Secondly, the density in Tri-Vista is half that of what is being proposed for Stackhouse. Tri-Vista is 63 dwelling units. Stackhouse is, I think now it's up to 113. Tri-Vista is on 9.8 acres. Stackhouse is 7.8. And Tri-Vista has a density of 6.4 dwelling units to the acre compared to 12.5 in Stackhouse. Stackhouse has, so is this a fair comparison between these two? Thirdly, Tri-Vista is a community of one-story triplexes with ample open space around each one. Stackhouse is proposing two-story attached townhomes and apartments with one common open space area. It's obvious that Stackhouse is an urban-style development being shorned into an area that's too small for the density and with impacts much greater than the development it's being compared to. At the Planning and Zoning meeting, the staff also pointed to the farm as another R3 zoning. The farm does meet the criteria for R3, including location, surrounding uses, proximity to downtown and schools, and proximity to commercial uses. And the farm is planned for twice as many dwelling units as Stackhouse, but on three times as many acres, resulting in an overall density less than Stackhouse. So these two R3-zoned areas that the staff included in their report are vastly different from Stackhouse. All the more reason that the R3 zoning is totally inappropriate and should be denied. And we certainly don't think that there should be any more pockets of spot zoning of R3 on County Road 306. That was all in my presentation, but I did want to ask. We had
Thirty seconds.
We turned in a formal protest to the town clerk yesterday in accordance with the state law, and I want to make sure that that's being considered by the board tonight.
That was emailed by Catherine to the board.
Yeah, I can address that when it comes to that. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Carol Colgate, and that's 15622 County Road 306. I've lived there for 47 years. My main topic is going to be the traffic. Perhaps the biggest concern of everyone on County Road 306, West Main Street, is traffic. Currently trying to pull onto County Road 306 out of driveways and side streets is difficult, and walking, bike riding can be dangerous. Backups at the signal at Highway 24 just keep getting longer and longer, especially for those residents who are driving to the schools and shops located on the east side of the highway. And that doesn't even take into account the large number of cars, trucks, RVs, and campers driving down into the Buena Vista on a Sunday afternoon in the summer. Now the town is considering approving the development of around 113 dwelling units on County Road 306 to add to the mix. This development is projected to add 808 vehicle trips on an average work weekday. With only one means of ingress and egress, all of these vehicles will be using County Road 306 for all of their trips. Other subdivisions such as Sunset Vista have access onto Rodeo Road, thus alleviating the load on County Road 306. The latest traffic counted by Chaffey County was in March of this year. They looked at traffic on County Road 306 between County Road 337 and the BBC city limits and found an average daily traffic count close to 2,000 vehicles. Stackhouse is projected to add 808 vehicle trips to that count. So we are looking at a potential daily count in the wintertime, hot summer, of nearly 3,000 vehicles. That is a major impact on those of us who live on 306. Let's look at the traffic study that the Stackhouse developer had done in 2021. There are two flaws would be counted that the traffic consultant did on County Road 306. The counts were taken in May, which is the wrong time of the
Thirty seconds.
accurate picture of the traffic on County Road 306. Apparently, the company doing this analysis did not understand the traffic flows on County Road 306 in the summer, which is the height of the tourism season. Traffic counts would have to be done in June through August to understand existing volume. The counts were taken on Tuesday and Wednesday during peak hours. There is a large influx of traffic on County Road 306 going over cottonwood paths.
That is your time. Thank you.
My name is Jay How. I live at 28636 Lupine Drive in West Winds subdivision. I'd just like to ask, I'm gonna follow up on the traffic. And I'd really like to just ask, how many of you, if it's a show of hands, like to sit in traffic? Amazing, okay. You know, I just, just want to follow up on that traffic study. The traffic study the developer had done included that the improvements should be made at the Stackhouse intersection with County Road 306 to better accommodate increased traffic being generated by that subdivision. The suggested improvements are to extend the 35 mile an hour speed limit to west of Stackhouse and to add a left-turn lane on County Road 306 for vehicles traveling westbound and going into Stackhouse. What the traffic study does not address is how to mitigate the impacts of the rest of the residents who are going to need help getting into and out of their driveways and streets due to the traffic from this development, nor does it have recommendations for handling the increased loads of the signal or on the signal at the highway of 24 and 306. And I just want to, I just want to reiterate how many of you folks really have given thought to the traffic backup at the light? As the last woman just said, school buses, RVs, trailers, the study was done in the middle of the week in May. It's, it just doesn't make any sense. I feel very strongly that, and I don't know because I'm not on Planning and Zoning, but a town doesn't get built from the outside in. And that seems like what we're doing. I feel that
Thirty seconds.
Alex bought the property as it was zoned, and it should be built in that fashion. I feel also that there's other areas that it could have been built in, south of Colorado Mountain College would have added easy access to the highway. Infrastructure has to be extended, but it could be done. That's all I've got to say.
Thank you.
James Nelson, he should be up.
Mike, do you see a James Nelson?
I do not. Yeah, and we've gone through all the raised hands online. So if you're James, please raise your hand. Or star six if you're the caller.
You have another one?
I think I'll just close with my last thoughts. Are that I would really question the affordability of the housing that's going to be put on the 80 to 100% AMI and the definition of affordable housing, and if that's really going to solve the problems that are in the housing classes that are being faced. I also question the timeline for this. I mean, first it was three to five years, and it's five to 10, and now it looks like 10 years for the condos. So I think we really need some clarification of the timeline, how that's going to affect things. As far as the roads, I'd love to see those provisions in the developer's agreement to help us with our road to have more turn-ins than just into the Stackhouse project. I mean, there needs to be more than just one turn-in for them. How are the rest of us supposed to get into our homes? So, and have that in the developer's agreement, not just discussion. So that's what I'll close.
Thank you, Jen. Then we had Eggleston.
Hi, thank you for letting me speak today. And also, thanks for your service. I've been on a lot of boards, so I know how much time it takes, and sometimes it's a thankless job. I live at 15870 T Road. So yep, this is in my backyard, and I'm concerned about it. I wrote this whole thing, but they all said it, so I'm not going to read it. So I'm just going to tell you the three things that I'm really most concerned about. R3 zoning is not appropriate. We all know that. Everyone in this room, everyone here, planning is zoning. Acknowledged it. The town staff acknowledged this is not the appropriate place for R3 zoning. So why are we considering it? We're considering it for affordable housing. So if that's what we're doing, if you're going to push this project to the county residents that want to live in a rural setting, then why are you not making sure it's going to be attainable or affordable housing? Why is your agreement not talking about Chaffey County resident owners? Why is your agreement not talking about restricting prices, restricting rents, future sales? All of those things are going to dictate what the price of those units are going to be. So if you don't have that in your agreement, there's no guarantee that what you're trying to do here is ever going to work. The second thing that concerns me is this parcel of land, and somebody else mentioned it. It was purchased based on a value of low to medium density. So by changing this to an R3 density zoning, you have completely increased the value of this property. The developer could walk away tomorrow after you have approved it, if that's what you choose to do tonight. He could sell the property for an increased profit and walk away from this development. I'm not saying he's going to do that, but then you have to deal with another developer, and is he going to do what this guy says he's going to do? Because it's not in your agreement. You guys are setting a precedent tonight for what's going to happen to rural areas surrounding Buena Vista. Is that what we want? Do you have a plan for all of the areas surrounding Buena Vista, and what is your plan? Does this fit in that plan? I'd like to see you sit down and figure out what we want our town to look like. Shouldn't these types of decisions fall within a well-thought-out plan
Thirty seconds.
that takes into account things like water distribution, traffic, neighborhoods, neighboring communities, public facilities? Last night I looked, there's over 270 properties that are going to be affected by this project from the County Road 361 into town limits. So before you guys make your decision, please think about that. Think about what we all want Buena Vista to be. We want it dotted with R3 zoning all the way around. That's not why we're here.
Time.
That's not why any of us is here. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, we have some other people that are signed up, and so if there are more that would like to speak, please step up. State your name. Right ahead. State your name and address.
Okay.
Mayor, while that's happening, we have an additional person online as well.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
I'm nowhere near as sophisticated as anybody else who's been here because I didn't come prepared. I've just been listening.
Could you give us your name and address?
My name is Rebecca Arthur. My address is 130 Cornell Drive in Buena Vista. I just, I looked at the plan tonight, and I have a question that was on one of you, I had a best or a clarified questions, but so I didn't see very much parking. I think, you know, I didn't count the places, but I saw maybe 20 parking spaces for is everybody else going to ride bicycles or park on 306 or, you know, I don't see that that was given a lot of consideration. How many were there there?
And actually, you know, we can direct that question to him, and staff can comment on that when we get back into interaction. So we'll make a note of that.
It's just a consideration. And the other thing is that, you know, I hadn't thought about it, but I am involved with Grace Church at Linderman and right about the library. And on a Sunday morning, trying to get onto County Road 306 from Linderman is damn near impossible at this time of the year. I think it's going to be impossible during the summer. It's going to be hideous with the cottonwood thing, unless there are some four-way stops and some things like that put in, like there was at Railroad in 306 that made an enormous difference. So it may be something that you can mitigate from a traffic standpoint, but it's certainly a consideration, and I haven't thought about it until you spoke. So thank you for my
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Anyone else like to speak? Please state your name and address.
Good evening. My name is Susan Champagne, and I live at 1009 Yale Avenue. But I am a co-owner of a property at 15732 County Road 306, which is directly across the road and north of the proposed development. And some of you may know it. I am the a co-founder and president of the Board of Directors for Mini Blessings. And if you're not familiar with us, we are a nonprofit organization that provides equine assisted learning activities in the central region. We've been at that location for 12 years. We selected We've been at that location for twelve years. We selected that location and purchased that property that we're on because it was in the county and values that are identified in the county comprehensive plan went along with our values of needing, providing more of a rural type atmosphere and the properties all around us fit into that category. We have been providing opportunities here. We do not charge for our services. We make, we work with a lot of youth groups. We have programs going with the Unavista School District. And all of those we do at no charge. And the development of the property has all been done by private funds, primarily the other co-founder and I. So we have a huge investment in this property and in, and in many blessings and the programs that we provide. Today, the land, well, about two or three years ago, we put that property in a Many Blessings Trust. And we're the trustees, Chrissy Smith and myself, but when we're no longer able to be trustees, the property will go and be under the trusteeship of the Chaffey County Community Foundation. And we want it to be left to the community for healing. This proposed development will have a very significant impact on what we do at Many Blessings. When we give programs, generally what we do is have an activity and then we sit down with the group and discuss what they learned from it and then discuss how they can share that and use what they learned in their homes, their schools, their workplace. That takes a little bit of a quiet atmosphere. And with a development like this right across the street, that will significantly, that's the main thing I worry about.
Thirty seconds.
The noise. I also had a horse that once the, the highway was reopened, over cottonwood path with that increased traffic, he developed stomach ulcers and narcolepsy. And I had to remove that horse. So we're very concerned about the impact of additional traffic on our livestock there. The last thing is, this proposal is make a left turn lane into the development. Well, anytime you increase accelerate a vehicle, you significantly increase the noise level and estimates are about
Your time, Susan.
So anyway, the noise is going to be great there and impact us significantly.
Thank you. We have the one on Zoom. Is it Daniel?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead. Speak your name and address, please.
Daniel Willman, two eight five eight six Lupine Drive.
Go right ahead.
Okay, so just after hearing tonight's hearings, I do want to challenge the board on the topic of affordable housing, who will be upholding fair and equitable lending practices? Based off of the numbers seen tonight that homes would be sold under fair market value. I challenge who would be enforcing and governing that, that lending policy, especially without programs like HUD or Section Eight involved in this. I questioned the validity of, quote, the affordable housing efforts here. Also, as stated earlier, Unavista allows for thirty percent short term rentals. In this development alone, that would allow for thirty units to be available for short term rentals. Does this really resolve our affordable housing crisis by allowing, by allowing this, this sheer number of rentals to be allowed in this development? I would challenge the board to revisit the short term rental policy, especially for this development. Because this development is being sold to the board as an affordable housing option for the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Thank you. Please state your name and address.
I'm Stan Hackman. I live at fifteen nine fifty five West T Road. I also own property at fifteen six eighty three county road trail six and twenty eight Fairway Drive, which are affected by the flagpole. I'd just like to say that whatever decision you make here tonight is really going to set a precedent for the property owners all the way out to three sixty one, like Jennifer said. You know, you're either gonna, because if you've got a couple acres of land, two, three, four, those people are either going to have an increased value if they want to come and do the same thing and request an R three zoning. And chances are they sell that property, make the money, get out. But the person who loves living here and likes their two acres or four acres or one acre, their property value is going to go down because they're next to this kind of thing. So it's really affecting the property values of all those people on three oh six. So I really encourage you all to really consider that because you know, I, I own the property right across the street, almost two acres. I could come to you and say, I want R three zoning and do the same thing. And I don't want to do that, but I'm just saying, consider what you're doing because it's either going to make somebody wealthy to sell it, higher property values or lower because they're living next to that. So give that some thought. The other thing I want to talk about is the traffic study. I know more than, maybe not more, but as much as anybody in this room about traffic on three oh six, because I operate and manage a golf course and I live on T Road. So I'm back and forth on that section. And doing the traffic study in May, it'd be like C dot on their I seventy project doing it two o'clock in the morning. I mean, that's ridiculous. You, you have to size infrastructure, all infrastructure is sized on maximum usage, not average. So you've got to do it on the maximum traffic that's coming down three oh six, which means you're probably going to need a stoplight to get in stack house, not just a turnway. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to speak? Please come forward, state your name and address.
Hi, I'm Christine Burdis. I live at one five eight seven three Fairway Drive. Everyone has touched on a lot of the issues at hand tonight. I am an architectural engineer practicing in the county and I'm held to the standards of the zoning code from the setbacks to the height restrictions to the deer fence around the front yard tree. Yet we are talking about zoning this property R three, which is a blatant disregard of the current zoning code. And it does set a huge precedent to build anything, anywhere you want in the county or in the town by looking at this and trying to zone it R three. There's been a lot of talk about how this is going to be an affordable development or an attainable development. But as everyone else has mentioned, there is no jurisdiction over keeping this attainable. There's no precedent or jurisdiction to say, hey, Alex, you have to sell these below market rate. That is not in the development agreement. And Alex even said that he hopes his performance is right. He hopes that he can make enough money off of the first phase to build the second phase. And that will leave us with a lot of market rate houses built and nothing else at the end. So I was also disappointed to see after the zoning meeting, the zoning commission said, you know, we'd like to see this be sixty seven or seventy six percent seventy six percent long term housing and not short term rentals. And yet Alex did not change his presentation at all to include any of the comments from the zoning commission. I just would like the town to consider everyone's comments tonight as far as the annexation, the zoning, the affordability and annexing this property is just extending the town's issues of affordable housing into the county and not really solving that issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Yes, please step forward, state your name and address.
Lynchall, five oh two Gold Street. And I am the community coordinator for Chaffey County High School. We have had a relationship with Many Blessings for the last eleven years. Our students do community service work. They mentor elementary school students out at Many Blessings. I can't tell you how many children run through the program out there. It's been awesome. And by having this high density population right across the street from a farm, the noise, the traffic, everything is going to affect our lessons, the children hearing, just paving, the road changed everything. When I go out and do lessons with these kids, they can't hear me. What is going to happen when we have all these people out there? And Many Blessings is a treasure. It's a treasure for this community. And I just want you to consider the effect it's going to have. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? Please state your name and address.
I'm Mary Jane Cavalo and I live at one five zero three three county road three oh six. In the last few years, the traffic has gotten worse and worse. And so other people have brought forth all the things that I was going to say. So I will just give you an idea of what it's like to live right about, right near, right around. By the time all the cars, the trucks, the vans, the RVs, the toy haulers, the trailers and all the other kinds of traffic go by, I can't get out of my driveway. It's really hard. Now, if I go out at, you know, off hours, you know, no problem in the winter. But in the summertime, and this is all anecdotal because we've already presented so much of what, you know, the comprehensive plan and the zoning and how odd it is to plop high density into the middle of a rural area. And that, you know, increased traffic, my neighbors next door actually told me one day in the summer that they and their sons and their family who were visiting were having good old time watching me try to get out of my driveway. That was their entertainment. This is what we're facing here. By the way, I really appreciate what the kinds of things I think we need this. Not out there. It's just going to be crazy. And, you know, horses are sensitive. And the people, you know, light and all those kinds of things, light bleeds, it really does. I noticed because I lived for twenty four years and I'm very well, in Washington DC. Controlling light is very difficult. It just is. But I really want to appreciate the planning that you do. I helped start a co-housing community in Washington DC in Phil, where it belongs. That's where these kinds of things belong, not out in the middle of where people have settled on purpose through a certain kind of way of life. And even though I know that we're going to grow, we've grown tremendously, especially in the last two years. I can't sit in front of my house anymore like I used to and enjoy it because I smell diesel fuels. And that's, so that's my anecdote, which is supporting everything everybody does. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anybody on Zoom? Nothing else? I close this portion of public comment. Next is to clarifying questions. Anything that was brought up that you would like to ask staff or the fisher? Concerns of parking? Staff like to address that? Obviously, we have code.
Yeah. Two quick pieces on that. One, the proposed master plan is submitted as two hundred and twenty five parking spaces shown. And that's a proposed master plan, which will get much more scrutiny and have to comply with our parking regulations under our UDC. And those parking regulations are based on the use of whatever lot we're talking about. Whether it's multifamily, single family, parking would be on the lot, on the park, on the other graduate, all depends on, on zone district itself.
We want to discuss the proposed amendments that came in from planning and zoning.
Yeah, so we can, you know, just a brief recap, the exact same slides I showed, but for public comment. Remember what qualifying high limit, increasing percentage of short term rental, prohibited units and a minimum number of apartment units. And then staff had recommended amendments. Increased understanding and thought on condos, how are they being treated? How are we making sure it doesn't lead to loss of long term housing? Getting rid of the SFE limit, if the case is going to be that the developers bring their own water. By no means is the board limited to those recommendations. You all can pick up any additional ones, drop any of those. So the intent of this particular slide here is given the, the complexity herein, is an opportunity to discuss any amendments you might like to make to the current annexation agreement, development agreement, zoning proposal. Please remember that, that this is not a foregone conclusion. This is not annexed property. But the terms of that annexation, should it occur, need to be discussed and agreed upon at this stage. So with that, I
Okay. Trustees, questions, comments? Jeff, when do we? It was brought up, a notice sent to town, when do we want to discuss that?
I can just give you a quick, quick summary of that. So there was a protest filed to the zoning. And so it's not to the annexation or to the eligibility resolution. So the way that works when there's a valid protest filed to a proposed zoning ordinance, that they need, you'll need, you now need two thirds of a vote of the governing, members of the governing body, which means that you have six seated members. So you'll need four votes in favor of the zoning to pass the zoning versus your normal, well, it actually would be four anyways, because you, you'd have, you, you need a majority anyways, but four makes it, wait, two thirds of the let alone stay. No, hold on.
Keep, keep going.
Yeah, yeah, that's
Michelle's on here, right?
That's two thirds. Yep, that's right. That's right. And, and the reason why I didn't try to, I was just sitting around is that you don't vote mayor, but you still count for the, for the two thirds requirement. So, so what you need is a, is a vote of four out of the six members to get your two thirds.
Okay. And even, and even that being stated, even though we're short one position, it would still be four.
Right. If you had, you had seven, you need to get
Gotcha.
Five.
And does he count in the four?
He, yes. Yeah, well, so he counts for the, he comes from six. He makes, he makes, he makes the requirement four because the mayor counts as a member. He doesn't, he doesn't get a vote, so.
So then we have to all vote for it.
Four, four out of the five, because trustee McCrazy votes.
Yeah, because we're, we're, this is not the quasi judicial side of it. This is in the zoning side of it, right? Just to clarify.
Yeah. And so for the resolution, you need to take a simple majority. And for the, the annexation ordinance itself, you need a simple majority. But we get to the zoning ordinance, you need the two thirds majority, which is the four.
Thanks, Claire. Clarifying questions more? Anybody? Gina, do you have anything?
I do. So, um, thanks for, it feels so weird to be over here in this little Zoom box. So recommendations that I would have is definitely amending it so it is thirty thirty feet high, so not thirty five. I would ask that there are no STRs in R three. I live in, in R three in town, the farm, and there are, it was interesting, the developer or Mr. Tiltor said it was just like the farm, it would not be if there were STRs. There are no STRs there. I can't imagine, especially in a seven point eight acre with potentially a hundred, and I don't think we've decided if it's one oh one or one ten, but having any STRs in a space that tiny and that, that congested. I think if we're doing this for the fact of if this were to be annexed, doing it for the reason of housing, affordable housing apparently, right? And if two thirds of this will be sold at market rate, I would, I would ask that instead of doing more than, or fifty apartment units, I'd prefer to see that I'd prefer to see that much higher, sixty, sixty-five. I mean, that's the whole point of this, I think, right? And then obviously no condos. Those were things that came to mind that, you know, I'm, I'm sharing. I, obviously I cannot vote with the, on this resolution, but those are my thoughts. Curious what the other trustees think in terms of these amendments. Because if this does go through, as Mr. Title type a lot said, like, this is what is, uh, we agree upon then in that case. So we have to get this, this right if this does go through. That's it for now.
All right, thank you. I think that and, and I think Alex touched on it, the no condominium, I mean, minimization, love that word anyway. More or less, and I'll go with collegiate commons. That one has a life. And so at the end of that life, it can become a private entity, other things can happen to it. I don't disagree that there's a something that could be revisited after a timeframe. I don't know if I'm just throwing this out there, board, you know, forever's a long time.
Yeah, you can't see.
You know, to, to foresee that. And so just out of that context, I just go, well, you know, do you put a limit on it to ten years, fifteen years, twenty years, whatever it is? And say that it could, at the end of that term?
I could go to have a limit on, on how long it has to remain apartments, like ten years, fifteen years.
In that way, you know, I mean, I think that would go with the town homes or whatever, you know what I'm saying? That's just a thought. I'm just throwing that out there.
Yeah, I guess the town homes.
One brief note, especially as it relates to the JV Housing Trust.
Yes.
Model they use of community land trust separating the ground from the building ownership. I believe that condominium is actually a legal way to do that. I want to, I would want to offer, if you want to prohibit condos for ten years, maybe exempt the JV Housing Trust or, or I don't know how we can word that, but exempt that model because it's specifically set up to provide permanent affordability.
Yeah, yeah, I'm not familiar with how they do it, but we could have, we have to work on some language to get it right. Probably tricky to do that on the fly, but if you give us direction, we could deal with that.
Another thing that was brought up early on was deed restriction. How, how many do we have? What is in the concept right now? What?
The, the only the only sort of restrictions in the development agreement speak to the prohibition of short-term rentals. There's, in the current version, there's no other deed restrictions as such. That could be an example of an amendment that you might be able to offer. Okay, now put it in the DA if you'd like to see the restrictions. And those would, under our current agreements with the JV Housing Authority and current understanding with them, those would be managed by the JV Housing Authority.
Gotcha, gotcha. Okay. Questions for thought, trustees? Any other ideas, thoughts, questions?
I like the amendments that were given by planning and zoning and also town. I agree with those. With, in regards to short-term rentals, I think, you know, in the planning and zoning recommendation, I think that should be, the minimum is eighty percent. You know, if the rest of the board agrees with trustee McCready on not having any short-term rentals, I'd be open to that as well. So.
Very tight community.
Yeah.
Any other clarifying questions for staff or the petitioner?
So traffic wise, how hard would it? I know it's not a state highway, so a county road would be different. Traffic is going to be an issue. Four-way stop signs, how easy would they be to implement? To control where people can get out?
Staff comment? I mean, obviously, we don't have that answer, you know?
I mean, do we have the authority since?
Now, the fact that we are, let's say, let's say, assume that the annexation goes through, so now we own or, or that flag is town road.
It's subject to town jurisdiction. And I think typically you look at like stop signs and traffic controlling as part of like a subdivision approval when they come in with the subdivision plan and they could, I think, I think your UDC would require like more traffic information that you have to deal with at the subdivision stage.
Yeah, I, I would just offer a perspective that having the development agreement stipulate a certain type of traffic mitigation at this stage may bind us in the future if the actual engineering and the subdivision process points to a different mitigation being more appropriate. So not to try to restrict you all in what you do, but the, the UDC does speak to how we, how we treat traffic and
And I guess that's one thing that it's pretty easy to forget that this does still fall under our UDC, that development does. So a lot of those things will be addressed.
Okay, because it, it affects traffic on, I don't know all the street names, but going into town towards the stoplight. So I was raised on Gunnison, so you got Gunnison, South Juan, South Pleasant or whatever. The people during the summertime can't get out on the highway with all the campers and stuff. So if, if traffic is such a problem, how, how hard would it be to put a four-way stop?
See, I understand your question, but, and the response is just as that is, is we can't at this point lock into something without further.
It would, it would be an interesting exercise at subdivision phase to, to explore how to back to this one development on, say, Gunnison intersection. And then if, if we have the ability to require this developer, this property to do an off-site improvement like that, I, I just don't know.
But you, you, you do have the ability to require developers to address the off-site impacts with traffic. So you, but yeah, I think the concern is that it's difficult to make a decision now as to what's appropriate. There's probably a lot of different options and you probably need more information to be able to do it. And your, the agreement does require compliance with the town code. And even if it didn't, you have to require a compliant with town code anyways. So the typical phase for doing that would be subdivision development. And you actually take a look at that, get more information, then require mitigation if necessary.
What happens excluding this project? But what happens at the stoplight when east of the stoplight, west of the stoplight, whatever? When, when it becomes a real issue for the residents, we've never had to really mitigate a large traffic issue before and, and
I hate to say it, but it's every Sunday.
Well, yeah.
I'm just saying, you know.
Is there are there mitigation, can we, we actually, not, not related to this, but look at traffic patterns, how to mitigate pressure, how to redirect?
The consultants that would love to come up with plans.
It's, it's going to be an issue eventually, whether, whether this goes through or not.
I can, you know, and I can say with, with, just on Rodeo Road, once that got cleaned up, great drive got paved, it took say, two, three years before people found it. Once they found it, then I started seeing more big truck traffic, trailers, RVs, that kind of stuff. And I think that probably will grow in and in itself, just because necessity, people get tired of waiting in line. I think that was mentioned. Who doesn't? And so I was really surprised it took them that long to find it. I really was.
Is there something in the planning now for the intersection of Rodeo Road and three oh six?
Nothing. No, that was addressed five years ago, six, a fourteen. Oh, when we did, yeah, I was going to say when we did the Greg Drive improvement and all that, yeah.
Yeah, and I, I'm also, I want to clarify, I'm not, I'm not saying get the can down the road on this one. If you decide that this is too big of an issue for, you know, traffic shows are a problem, you can always vote against the annexation. You know, I'm just saying that I think it's difficult to put in a an effective solution into the agreement at this stage without more details.
So, okay, any more clarifying questions for staff and or the?
A question, yes, mostly for Jeff probably. With all these comments about the code, that we're not following the code, is this a problem? I mean, I assume we've been in contact with you about it.
I mean, I think most of the, most of the comments were sort of like, were, were more policy and that you should be using a different zoning, it's not appropriate here. I mean, ultimately legally, you are, you are applying your code legally properly. It's your decision to decide whether what's appropriate zoning where. And then with the annexation agreement, you can add further restrictions on the zoning that you impose. So, I mean, it's not illegal. I think you're just looking at more policy comments. This is, this is, this is not appropriate. You should be considering the comprehensive plan, you should be using different zoning. That's certainly appropriate public comments, part of you to consider. But there is no legal issue here. It's like that you're violating your code by doing it this way.
Yeah, welcome. Anything else for staff? Go ahead.
Do the setbacks, the perimeter twenty-foot setbacks, does that need to be codified? Or add to the development agreement? It's, it's now just, just kind of, we would like to do this. I, I, I think it's rather important to, to put that in there just to maintain continuity with, as best we can, the surrounding.
Yeah, the, the current development agreement requires twenty-foot setback on the east side of the property and the south side of the property.
Sorry, I have a comment made about garages being in that setback. Is that, I don't think that's allowed, actually.
It'd be allowed if you built in a setback. They may be used for access. Driveways, fences, that sort of thing are, are allowed generally in setbacks, but not structured.
Other clarifying questions? Okay, Jeff, now we will go basically interaction. Then the question will be, do they meet qualifications for annexation? Right? And that will be quasi judicial. So Gina will step aside. Then we will, if, depending on the outcome, proceed forward or then we have no further discussion. If it does not pass the first vote, then there will be no other votes or no other discussion on the, the rest of the stuff. Right, correct, okay. So no other further, Gina, do you have anything for staff or the petitioner?
Um, I think, I think, I think I said everything I wanted to say and it looks like what is written down. The final amendments to the ANDA that all is, is pretty satisfying for me. So I will mute myself now.
Okay, just to clarify, I got, I wrote down what I heard. I didn't, I'm not saying that these are what you've decided.
Right, right, thank you. Anything else?
Do we need to clarify those amendments at all before we do that or?
We can do that in our discussion here. And clarify that's what we agree upon as a board. Correct, Jeff? And that's right, forward from there. Right? Okay? Makes sense? Okay.
Well, I have a chance to weigh in on these things you're going to ask me to do.
I'll ask a question. What are your thoughts? You're the petitioner.
Yeah, so I I have a minor, a minor point to the matter, thanks for that, about number one. Because of how the UDC is written in terms of how we measure building height, it's an average of natural grade and finished grade. And talking with staff, we can't ask you to change that, that way you measure. And so I'm, they, what this is, if I can ask for, because I'm using factory product and it's going to be on where I might have a fiveplex or I'll have an eightplex on a larger piece of ground where it may articulate more. I'm just thirty-two feet is what I would ask for. It's a small thing, but I, our, we're, we've got, currently have eighteen inches of wiggle room with the current product as planned. And I don't want to, I don't want to have a swale that it's like, oh, you're, you're over your height limit because of the swell. So that's, that's thing number one. The, the prohibition on STRs, the, the only thing I'll say about that is that I, I built a house in twenty fifteen over here behind the elementary school and I sat there alone for a long time. My wife and I mentioned my daughter. But part of how we made that work, how we made our Univista experience work is that we built a garage apartment and had first short-term rentals. And then when that, that stopped being a good, a good value for us, we ended up putting long-term rentals, rentals in there. And so for me, from, in my personal experience, just an anecdote, part of my affordability journey in this town was through, through a rental property. And so it's possible, I, I feel like I, I see a, a number of the developments, a number of the houses that have been coming on the market, you know, just to the south of this area are, are being built that same way, house in an ADU planned to be, planned to be a rental. And so I, I don't actually know if I actually have that, if, if I guess my, my, my preference would be to keep, to allow the homes, to allow the houses to have STRs in them as a method of affordability, as a potential affordability and please remember I'm using small A affordability, not, not big A. That, that's part of how that could be part of the housing solution. But it also could be like, e- even if you did say a hundred percent, you know, that, then those, those ADUs could be like in Slida, they're all long-term rentals and that's just how they are. And you do do a little different math and maybe that works.
In the current agreement, and correct me if I'm wrong, is what you were talking sixty to sixty-five apartments anyway, were you not?
My proposal is for sixty to sixty-five apartments.
Okay.
The, I would, I would rather not codify a number because we haven't had our infrastructure conversation. I have my proposed sketch drainage plan, but currently in there, it relies on park ponding, on, on tree lawns as drainage, as drainage retention. And there's a lot more engineering to be done. And so I just there's potential for, for me to like drop a building or drop a set of townhomes or something. And so, so when I, when I brought this up, so this was brought up at planning zoning at the fifty unit, I talked to my, the professionals in my group and, and nobody had ever been on a project where a minimum number of something had been dictated. Maximals, like we're talking about, there's a cap, that's, that's, that's what our business do, but not minimums.
And so if that, if that changed, then the minimum, the percentage of eighty to one hundred AMI would still remain the same, correct?
The twenty-five percent of the overall of the number of units would stay the same, it would just be up the reduced number.
Okay.
And that's what I wanted to, that's, that's how I'd like to codify it so I can so we can flex with reality.
You, you never know.
Yeah.
Other questions for the petitioner?
And then the condominium moratorium. So I, I was in our conversations. Part of why, so I, I think you said, we can't know the future. If we do something forever, it's forever. And that's, that's very presumptuous of us on the future. And so the idea that, the, the, what I wanted to do was I want to say, let's say, let's say a ten-year moratorium on condominiumization of these apartments to get us through this period. And, and frankly, you know, there's a lot of other apartments in the, in the town's pipeline. And so we're, we're, we're operating in a, in a scarcity environment right now and, and we won't be in ten years, we won't be in five years, thankfully. Well, yeah, 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 same. Fingers crossed here. But, but what I wanted to do is to say, I, I want to preserve the part, the affordability as, as part of the concept for rent, for sale. And so if, I, I'd want to say, let's say, let's say you, you impose a ten-year moratorium on the condominiumization of the apartments. I'd want another provision in there saying that if condominiumization, if, if after the, the moratorium expires, if, if we are allowed to condominiumize, then at that time, the same twenty-five percent that's, that's currently a rental product would become a for-sale product in the same, in proportion to the number of units sold. My original plan was that half these units where it's going to, you know, this is going back to your hat, you know, half the units are going to be apartments, half are going to be condos. That was my original plan. And part of the reason that I'm not going there is that, that all of my advice, the advice I've gotten is that if you're not, if you're building luxury condos, you know, go for it, have a good time. If you're trying to build anything that's within reach of anybody. You know, go for it, have a good time. If you're trying to build anything that's within reach of anybody. You're not gonna be able to afford the insurance. Then in Colorado and most of the country, there are, it's too, it's, there's too much. There's too much tenant friendly or, or owner, owner friendly, uh, laws. That it, it's, there's too much risk, you can't do it. And so the apartments make sense to town, it makes sense for me, the developer. And but, but when kind of many, when that ten-year moratorium expires. The, the condo, the condo liability has expired as well in terms of holding the developer more responsible. Um, but and because I've all had ten years to fix all of my mistakes that we, that, that whatever gets broken being built, but. To preserve the affordable concept, um, that's, I want to say, no condos for ten years. At, if, if condominiums are sourced, then twenty-five percent of them will be, will be made available at eighty to a hundred percent AMI level. Um, for sale at that time. And that again, because it's a percentage that allows me to say, I'm gonna sell half of them. And so half of those units we've retained, we'd retain, you know, twelve and a half percent in the rental pool, we'd sell twelve and a half percent because that's how many units would be being sold. This is, this is something that, why, if we can, if, if on this screen, if we can say that there will be a condo moratorium. With a permanent affordability clause, that will allow me and my attorney to work with staff in town to define that. And but we can, we could agree on what that means here.
Does that make sense?
Yeah. Yeah, I'm not sure I totally follow it, honestly.
Doesn't make sense to read.
So I have, um, I don't know if you have. I, I can read it, I can read it out so you can, we can just type it on the screen, maybe?
I'm not gonna, yeah, I don't wanna put words in y'all's mouth of what you wanna.
I, you know, I want to, I mean, I know what he's saying, but I want to see it. So that I make sure I'm understanding.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know what you're, I know what you're trying to say is you wanna have that option. At the end of ten years to do the condominiums.
Yeah.
And also flex number, the percentage number.
Right. So let's, let's do.
Makes sense.
Let me, let me.
I'm happy.
I mean, I'm just.
Go ahead.
Let me specify, let me, let me, let's do two, let me specify two things, because this was brought up in public comment. That. Need to memorialize the affordability in the rental apartments in an amendment in this developer's agreement, so you guys can hold me accountable for it. So what I, what, one amendment about the apartments needs to be that the apartments will, will, let's hear, so here. Point one. Where rentals will be priced to serve missing metal eighty to a hundred and forty percent AMI customers. In my presentation, I say twenty-five percent of the units will be priced for that eighty to a hundred percent AMI customer. We could also say that, but, but that the overall governing concept of the rental units is that the average rental price. Would be affordable to a person earning a hundred and twenty percent of AMI averaged over the units. So there will be eighty percent units, hundred percent units, hundred and twenty, hundred and forty percent units. The average is a hundred and twenty. That was, that would govern the rental, rental portion of the existence of the apartments.
Not sure I captured the second thing. You said twenty-five percent will serve a hundred.
Right, so, um, so the second thing should be, it's just be that, that, over, you know, over the, the overarching, so. Over the average, over the whole complex, the average rents will not exceed a hundred and twenty percent AMI.
Over the whole complex?
Over the whole complex.
And, and so what you're wanting to do at the end of that tenure period, what are you wanting to? Consider, what are you wanting us to consider? I guess is a way to put that.
I'm, I'm sorry, in lieu of a general moratorium, that's what I suggest is a ten-year moratorium. And that at expiration of that moratorium, if the owner at that time chooses to sell a given number of units. The twenty-five percent of them will be sold into permanent affordability through an organization like the Housing Trust. To eighty to a hundred percent AMI customer. Similar, and I wanna serve that same customer who, who may have, who may have, who to, tomorrow would be buying a townhome. I wanna make more units available to that similar customer, in this case. And more than saying, times twenty percent, any things created after ten years must be sold into eighty to a hundred percent AMI affordability, uh, permanent affordability.
Seems like on the apartment rent, you're pushing up the AMI. To higher than we want it, where, where you've got the twenty-five percent of those apartments, or the next line, the last line, the average of all rents for the apartments. Will not exceed a hundred and twenty percent AMI.
That's, is that just the apartments or is that a whole complex?
It's just the, we're just talking.
Just the apartments. Okay, thank you.
Seems like that would be more appropriate to have that be a hundred.
Well, um, if we have. Eighty to a hundred, hundred to a hundred and ten, hundred and ten to a hundred and twenty, I guess I, I'm saying a hundred and forty, I guess. I guess if, if I was gonna break it into quarters, it should say a hundred and thirty percent AMI. I'm using that eighty to a hundred and forty, because that's what, that's the language that's used when discussing missing metal. And so there, there will be units in there, I guess that, that's why I wanted to call out that, that the most affordable units. That there will be, you know, let's say if I build. If I build sixty units, if I build sixty apartments, um, then there will be fifteen units that are affordable to that eighty to a hundred percent customer.
And that's very similar to what we were looking at.
But all the rest of them could be, um, closer to a hundred and twenty.
They could, that's right.
And that's, like I say, that's very similar to what we were looking at, carbonate, and very similar to what's on there. And, and actually at the intergovernmental meeting, they were talking the average right now. I don't remember if it was Chaffey County, total was a hundred and sixty AMI average house sale.
That's what the current rental market offers to the community at large today. Yeah.
So when we talk these numbers. That's pretty amazing if you can hold that for ten years.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm pretty sure I can. And that's, but, but that's why I need to say.
Right.
That there are only certain things I can, I can agree, promise, which is that, that, that at least, you know, fifteen units will be for that customer. And that gives me the room to get, get up there. But that's why I also say a hundred and twenty overall, so that I'm not. And it's not like just that and then everything else is one, is a hundred and forty, because that would, that would skew it out, out of, out of whack.
And obviously the, and, and obviously for discussion purposes, the only way you can afford to do this is to have the homes. Selling out at market rate. Otherwise, you can't afford to even start this.
Right, right. The homes, the homes create the equity to finance the apartments in the first place.
And that's the whole problem that we have now. Nobody's willing to go that far, take it that far. So any other questions for the?
Oh, I'm sorry, there's one, one more thing.
Oh, no.
Um, this is also brought up and that, 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 to be worked out, but the, 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 of the apartments. I don't, I don't have the answer to this. I think that the, the housing authority has the answer to this. Some sort of preference for county employees. If you can just put just that, and if that, if that seems appropriate, that we will have, we'll have some sort of mechanism for, you know, for, for the affordable units that I'm, that we're selling. The housing trust will vet those, vet those people, pre-qualify them, and that's their, that's my pipeline for those people. Eighty to a hundred percent AMI people. Uh, I'll need a pipeline from the housing authority. And so.
Some way to know what's going in there. I think, I think that's a good. That's a good point to put in there.
Uh, yeah, I mean, that's, that's something the housing authority.
Yep. Um, and I believe they're, they're doing something similar to that in Slida, am I right? Maybe you know, maybe you don't, but it seemed like they were doing something down there. They're giving preference. I don't remember what the, the, the facility was or anything like that.
Do you mean in-county residents or county employees?
I, I wanna, I wanna leave that to the professional, the people who are managing those sorts of things, that if I, if I say. Becky, give me a, you know, create the pipeline for people who belong in these units. With a preference towards, I, my preference is toward e- employees. What I haven't done is I haven't hired a fair housing lawyer to say, how do I do this? Without violating a variety of laws?
I see, I see a housing guy and a lawyer both going like this. Crossing the line.
You might want seniors to, you know, who are not technically employed, but.
Well, and they could, if, if you took the in-county concept and, and left off the employees. Then anybody could qualify to get in there where, if they were on fixed income seniors. Um, or, you know, obviously. Obviously.
I, I've been doing a lot of thinking about workforce and I have not done much thinking about seniors, just to be fully honest.
It, it, it tends to get.
Getting older.
Well, it tends to get forgotten. I mean, it really does. And I was actually surprised Becky brought up in her presentation. Any other clarifying questions?
There are some issues with fair housing laws. Um, the city's slides are running that right now and saying that city employees get preference. Um, so you should put something to the extent that fair housing law will allow or some clause just to protect you. Can't legally do.
Jeff likes that too.
Yeah, I, I, I mean, I just, fair housing is out of my, um, above my pay grade, so I'll have to, I have to take a look at it if we put something in there.
Of your pay grade?
I'm leaving, man. I, you know, I don't, giving my wage, I don't know.
I, I think that's a good point to put in there. To the extent the law allows, if you wanna put it that way, because I think there's gonna be some, some rocky road.
And we're gonna, we can work at this language.
Yes.
These are the general concepts we're gonna get and we'll make sure.
Okay, any other clarifying questions? And you don't get anymore.
A statement that, that, that this condo, the, the restrictions on the apartments and the condo concept would be in lieu of a minimum. So I would ask to remove the minimum because.
Oh, the apartment a minimum?
Yes, that's hard to be committed to. And I, and I wanna, you know, Gina, Gina was suggesting that, so I, I don't know if you have a.
Because I think, what was the, the, um, planning and zoning said fifty? Food for thought. You want none?
Yeah, yeah, right. That, that's a good point. Yeah, if, if I was, if, if there was a, thank you, if there was a, a minimum, if you could do it in units of eight. Um, because that's how. So forty. So forty-eight would be the closest to what, what the, the board is asking. When I was thinking it through, I was thinking that, that, that the condo moratorium concept. And the affordability codifying the concept would give you the comfort you need. Um, to not need the minimum. I really, that was, that was the whole, the whole idea was, it was just, it was like, it's like what Gina was saying. Um, I, I don't remember the commissioner who brought it up. I think it was Thomas at the. At the planning zoning, but, but. I don't know how you, I don't know how you say. We're annexing you in anticipation of you building apartments, like you were asking, can we do the apartments first? Because that's what we need. Maybe we can find a way to, to ensure that. I don't know. Something, if there's, if there's a way to ensure that I will build apartments, I'm, I'm open, I'm open to being held that way. A minimum, a minimum ties me in a way that is, is concerning.
I, I guess I, I make a comment is that, you know, and thinking about the minimum, I'm not really sure how we enforce the minimum. That's, um, because if you put them first, easy. Gotta have those, then you can do the houses. Put them second, they can do the houses and then. Right. So I'm not really sure what the minimum does.
That's the only real rental product there is, right, is your apartments.
Townhomes. Yes, unless, well, the townhomes, if people, they'll be for sale that.
Yeah.
And then they, they build ADUs.
I think what you could do is you could basically be clear that there's on the portion of the property that's planned for apartments.
The only thing that may be built there is.
Is apartments. And at least that way, you're clear that you're not gonna put anything else there than the apartments.
That, that's something that I could, I could agree to that if.
So we would be attaching the master plan as an exhibit and referencing a specific area of it?
Yeah, or, or we could do a percentage of the property, you know, once, you know, once the certain of the property is used by single-family homes, you gotta put apartments in or. For the other percentage, that way you're covering land area. I'm just, this is me thinking this through without.
Right. Quickly. What percentage is that property you know on hand, Kelly?
It's roughly a third of the property.
So thirty percent, thirty-three percent?
So it's the north third.
It, it could also be handled during preliminary plat, um, as we define, as we define the lots.
Stuff I think Gina wanted to say something. You got something, Gina? Go ahead.
Yeah, I didn't know if I still allowed to, I, just tell me when I'm like cut off from allowing, being able to say anything anymore.
We'll let you know.
Okay, okay.
She can vote on this, right? She can only, the only thing she can't vote on is eligibility. She can vote on all these.
Right, right. She, yeah, she, she has her voice in this, but not in the, the other vote.
The actual.
But yes, no, you're, you're open. Go ahead.
Um, in thinking about the two phases and thinking about water, so. Um, and I don't know everything about, like, I know we're doing all these water talks and, you know, everything, but. So let's say we do, let's say phase one happens and you reserve water, you have that. I don't think you actually really get that until. Like, further down, further down the road. I know you say you have it, but. I mean, I don't think you actually have it until there's something there and all that jazz. But what happens if by the time you go to make the apartments? Which is really the, like, the meat and potatoes of why this whole thing is, uh, why this is even on the table in the first place, right? What happens if you can't get that water at that point? If, and.
The water agreement has to happen before.
At final plat.
At final plat.
It has to dedicate the water before final plat is approved, before a single piece of dirt is moved.
Yeah.
So if, if he's only proposing the first preliminary plat for phase one, then he has to dedicate the amount of water. Um, that covers phase one. Then when he, if he comes back in for a separate phase at preliminary plat, that's the final plat at which he would bring the water for that phase. So he would not have to bring the water for the entire development if he was only bringing a preliminary plat. Um, application for one phase of it.
Is it possible that, that could not happen come phase two, depending on future? I mean, I guess anything.
If you can't find the water, right? Sure.
Yeah, I could, so, um, and we've seen other developments in town take a long time to get between phases. But if I, um, but, um.
Oh, yeah.
Sorry. But I'm trying, what I wanna say though, Gina, is that the fucking that I'm pulling the water from is big and deep. Way bigger than that, what I'm, it's, it's. There is a lot of water for sale in the way that I'm buying water for this project. And it's water that's not project water.
Right.
And it's, um, it's very senior and. I'm, I'm just excited because it's, it gives me much more comfort about the future of our water in this community in general, for my development, sure, but in general. So. That's, that's not, that's not me committing to anything. That's me saying, there's plenty of water, Gina, don't worry about it.
And, and that was in the, what we talked about in the agreement, that that has to be, it can't be project water, it has to be senior. It's, I mean, that was.
It basically says adequate water, right? So we didn't decide what's adequate.
Yeah. Did that define adequate?
Right. And so, I mean, I, you know, I hear the concern, the trustee of the crazy stating is that. You, you have water now for your initial phase and then you'll go, go to the apartment phase, which you care about, you don't have water and you can't get it done. I mean, so, you know, there's solutions to that that may work for the town, it may not work for the developer, which is require commitments for all the water for the entire development upfront. But that may not be financially feasible for the developer. So I, I don't know.
And, you know, just offer a reminder that, um, your, your terms are, are your terms, um, at the end of the day. And those can result in an agreement to, and we'd upon annexation, should you approve annexation, or they may result in a non-agreeable.
Right.
I just wanna offer that, that, um. That, that you, you set your terms as, as a town trustees and then they can be agreed upon or not.
You know, and there's, this is, this is truly just occurred to me that, not, not that you'd wanna do this, but that. That if we're, if we're shuffling money around and you want water upfront, maybe you backload the annexation fee. So I can spend the annexation fee on water now, and then I owe the, the annexation fee at, at phase two. So you get the water now, and so you don't have money now, but you have water now, which is more of a concern. Just this idea that the annexation fee is not actually enough to cover the amount of water for the apartments, but it's something, just a thought.
Then our public works is doing the extra work without the extra pay for it, right?
No.
That's what the annexation fee is for, is public works.
It's a long-term estimation of road, street.
So long term estimation of road, street maintenance, things like that.
Not necessarily the the building of them at this point.
Keeping.
But the planning of it, the infrastructure, water sewer.
Yeah, it's it's independent of the infrastructure installation. It's after everything is built and then as.
Right.
Uh, snow is plowed and.
Right.
It's my impression that that from the report and from what staff has. Has concluded that the water that the developer is bringing is enough to offset the water that we're gonna be using, correct?
That's the requirement.
Yeah.
Water and adding to Jeff's point.
And that's part of the agreement.
What's adequate at the right time, which would be.
Yeah.
Other questions? Thank you, Alex. Do you have anything else, Gina?
Um, I just. I I think that the apartments should the AMI should be lower than popping out at one forty. Again, that's the whole point of this was really the apartments and that's, and we keep saying the missing middle, the missing. I mean, it's same as the word attainable. It's just jargon. I mean, like R three in town, right? Market rate. Living over the farm, it's like three hundred sixty six bucks per square foot. So sixteen hundred square foot home is about. Five hundred eighty six thousand dollars. All right. So I mean, when we use all these words, is that really attainable? I don't know. Maybe for some, maybe, you know, so I guess I like. I get the one forty and I understand a lot of this, but I think that's too high. Those apartments are supposed to be dedicated to those people. That are um, in a tougher boat economically. I just, that's, in my opinion, that was, that's why we're we're. We're doing this whole thing or we're we're looking at this as something as a possibility. So if that keeps bumping up, I mean, what's? If 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 they can, if he could rent them out at one forty, why would he rent them out at eighty? And I know you're sitting right there, Alex, but you know, but like, I mean. Well, it feels weird to say that, but I got it like I'm trustee for town and I gotta look out for. The people here and and thinking about that. And I also understand um, things cost money. I I'm I'm not, that doesn't. I'm not oblivious to that, but um, selling all those other homes at uh. Market value, market rate value is quite high and um, you know, like I said, I have some insight into R three. Living in one and in the same homes that uh, it sounds like um, Alex will, you know, be utilizing fading west. And so I just, I really think that 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 one forty AMI for the apartments as the top is too high. Um, I think it's gonna hurt us with those people that apartments were originally made for, because why would, why why sell it at eighty? AMI if you could sell it one forty?
Uh, it's it's a good, it's it's worse. I'm glad you brought it up. Looking at an AMI chart over here. And so the the thing that we're not talking about at all is market constraints to rental prices. And a three person family um, making a hundred and twenty percent of the AMI. Um, has, you know, thirty percent of their income that's available for housing is right at two grand. Almost all these uh, these these units in my plan right now are seven hundred square foot, two bedroom apartments. I don't, um, so I don't even have this, this uh, this table doesn't actually have a hundred and forty percent AMI on it. Um, I don't know. Not bad. Yep, I don't have it right here. Um, I think it's really unlikely I'm gonna be able to find anybody who wants to pay. Twenty five hundred a month for uh, seven hundred square foot apartment. I think that that's that's the thing we're not considering is that really, that's that's the limits that I'm committing to, but the markets can tamp it down in the first place. And that that. I actually probably could, I probably could say, I probably could say one one hundred thirty percent AMI. Um, to to bring that back down closer, closer to something. I didn't, I didn't, I didn't put that in there to be like a negotiating point, be like, all right, I'll give you ten percent. Um, I I really. That's that's just what missing middle, how missing middle is defined. And so I, that's, but but the idea that that uh, that what I'm planning to build. Would be priced at 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 that kind of a level is is really very unlikely, I guess, is what I'm trying to say.
Yes.
Other clarifying questions for staff or the petitioner?
Or you saying? Trustee, you look crazy. Did you, you were saying something?
I was gonna say, if you don't intend to sell them at one forty, then why? Uh, like in the final amendments document that's up on the screen, at least I can see through Zoom, it says eighty one forty AMI, then why not just chop it down?
In the same reason that I'm trying to leave leave myself wiggle room in case. In case my pro forma isn't perfect, uh, in case I need to build some three bedroom apartments, in case I need to. You know, combine two units and make make something that's more size appropriately for a family or something. I don't wanna, my my current plan, my sketch plan says. Seven hundred square foot apartments across the whole thing, because it's easier for me to think about in my planning phase. But once we drill down into this, that subdivision and a a sketch plan, master plan, it's gonna get real detailed. And there's really a possibility that I could, I could build, um, you know, a four bedroom. It's crazy, but let's say I just combine, I I say I'm building one last unit, because I'm combining two units, fourteen hundred square feet. Well, fourteen hundred square foot, three bedroom, that's a twenty five hundred dollar rental in Kansas County right now. Um, and that I I don't wanna. If I if I eliminate, if I if I say, if I say eighty to one twenty, then I just take take that off the table. For discussion when it's actually time to plan for what kind of units I'm gonna build. So it's just, this is just one more thing where it's just tough timing about. We we have incomplete information, we all have incomplete information. Uh, but if you if you leave, if you. If you leave me the flexibility, then I can, then then when it when we when we drill down into those details. I can make the project work.
Any other clarifying questions? Okay, I close this portion, trustee. Discussion. We have several. Items that have been put before us. Um, he would like to see wiggle room thirty feet, thirty two feet. Because of. Geographic.
Current zone.
Thirty five.
Is thirty five.
And in the county, it's thirty five.
Right.
I think that makes sense from an engineering perspective.
Thirty two?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Um, next item was the eighty percent or prohibit completely STRs.
I think burn explanation is is reasonable. I know I have a lot of, I have friends who purchase housing in this. Town for those very reasons, being able to rent out an ADU.
It's the only way they can pay for it.
Right, and I think eighty percent is very high. Of prohibiting STRs, I think that's, I think that can be reasonable. I think a hundred percent is. Would leave out those few people the, being able to afford it, so.
They bet at eighty.
Okay. We have, and and I'll remind you, we have no restriction on primary homeowner STRs. That was your vote.
That's my thought.
That was your vote. No restrictions on primary homeowner.
I would restrict. STRs out of them. Totally.
Eighty percent.
So if you did it a hundred percent. Provision, would that restrict people? Like you said, like, we don't restrict people that own the house, own the property.
No, that would restrict them. You're saying none. You're saying you're.
So this is, if if we're saying it's prohibited in a unit, that unit definitely won't qualify no matter who owns it. We're saying that it's eligible, then you're under the the licensing requirements. And so if there's a space available, based.
If they spit, yeah.
So as long as they fit those requirements. Are prohibited no matter who you are.
Okay.
If you allow any percent in those twenty percent, if there's available licenses, then they could maybe pursue.
And they could be in there. But there's no restriction on primary.
Correct.
In city limit. Next item.
Decision on that.
What's that?
Did we decide on that?
I got thirty two and eighty number wise. Unless.
What does he change?
Gina thing.
Gina, what did you have? You were you were a hundred percent anyway.
I was a hundred percent because I live in an R three and I know what it it just. And this is, this would be an even tighter R three. And.
The question, the question is.
Hundred percent. I would say a hundred percent.
Okay, that's the question. So we've got three that are saying eighty and two that are saying a hundred. So I'm saying eighty percent. Uh, thirty percent land, I think that was pretty much decided that that must be used for apartments. That would be written into it. Correct?
Yeah, I think that's that's fair, given that it's hard to. Give an exact minimum. And then hold them to it. But.
Other trip, what are your?
Does it mean that the the phase two, you know? Does it, does the land? Can it, it could be rearranged currently to be anywhere. I'm not sure that's relevant, but the intent is that the front thirty percent done.
Right.
A bunch.
The tough part from a legal document perspective is that we don't have a legal definition of any subset of this property. So I don't know how we would define which thirty percent.
Yeah, we're just saying that thirty percent would be there.
I mean, this way, we at least know that if they're building single families or townhomes, and at some point they hit seventy percent, they can't do anything more other than apartments. With a minimum, I don't think there's, it doesn't really work. And then the number doesn't really work, I don't think, so.
Joel, you had a comment.
Just um, uh, thinking about um, is that after we build the roads and parking lots? The leftover thirty percent or thirty percent of the total property?
Build a block area?
Just thinking.
I was, I was thinking available units. Does that make sense? No, property, it would be property.
Yeah, to me, it seems like it would need to, I I guess it depends upon whether it's the thirty percent, I guess. Would be, it included the roads for the apartments and the parking for the apartments, and then you'd have the seventy percent would be the roads and the. Land for everything else. So. Apartments and I got, I mean, you say apartments and um.
Corresponding instructor.
Yeah, yeah, related infrastructure. It's, it's, yeah. It's tricky to do this on the fly.
Why you drove here?
Yeah. We'll be here, we'll be all spending the night here, right?
Um, okay, the condiment uh, condominiums, ten years. Divided twenty five percent at the end of the ten, maybe sold. Okay, must be sold into the eighty one hundred AMI deed restrictions. Yes.
Okay.
Trustees? Okay. It kind of a hang up, but not really when I consider that in two years, when this is all done, AMI and average homes can be one eighty.
Can I clarify one on number four dot one? Can we take away the word deed restriction and put the word product or limitation to our covenant covenant? Just to not limit us to that particular legal method for achieving this goal.
Yeah, I know, I was gonna mention something like that too. I'm sort of, we're getting general concepts here again. I think ultimately, we'll probably have to bring this back. Once we have a conversation.
Yeah, because deed restriction is a definite term.
Yes.
Right.
Yeah. And and then that would fall under the guise of another entity anyway. I think that's what we were talking about, that that would fall under JP Housing. Let's, let's use what you've got there, and then that will be a discussion, Jeff, as to. How we can make that word right.
Right.
Makes sense. Okay, number five, there again, that's a tough one. Um, obviously, we're not saying they're gonna be one forty. We're hoping they're gonna be one twenty. We're hoping they're gonna be, who knows? Um, there again, and I like the example set. Who's gonna spend two grand on a two bedroom apartment? But. They're doing it. It's sick. They're just doing it. Um, it's all over. Uh, you look at the stuff that's listed in Slida and even around here and. It's insane what people are paying for housing. It's just insane. Um, I think, are we okay with the twenty five percent of those will be eighty to a hundred and no more than that?
Yeah, I agree with that.
Dave, Cindy? Okay, and then obviously, that number could actually grow, from what I'm hearing from the petitioner. It it could be more than that. And just because.
Yeah, and having the number two, the average of of all rents.
Yes.
Be in that as well.
Yeah, falls in there. And then we're going to um, shoot for preference. Be given to in county, and we're gonna look into that. To see what kind of, what we can get away with there, Jeff.
I think we're gonna just include to the external value by applicable law, because there you go, asking change is complicated, so we'll just do that.
It'll get ugly if we just throw it out there like this, so. Applicable law, I like it. Uh, anything else? That makes sense with those amendments?
Is there anything else from planning and zoning or from town that we're forgetting?
Staff staff had uh, recommended that if the applicant is bringing their own water, we remove the SFE limit.
Oh, that's right. It doesn't apply anymore.
That's fine. I think that's good too.
Okay, we did the condos, yes, FPs. Go ahead, Philip.
Just uh, trying to capture all this on the fly with you. I think one of the things that was definitely brought up multiple times and um. Public comment and something that. Is already an existing issue is the traffic and the discussion about when the traffic, more in depth, traffic studies will be done at subdivision process. But maybe the board wants to consider specifying that um. Offsite traffic impacts will be evaluated during that process. Cause I, I think the UDC talks about the need for that and staff. Future staff, if it's not us, hopefully would consider the larger impact to traffic, but um. I don't know, it might help ensure that things such as the traffic at the highway. Uh, traffic at rodeo road, these side streets are. Definitely included in that overall study and mitigation evaluation.
The best way I can put it is some mistakes were made in another agreement that weren't documented. And if we don't document it, it will go away. And so I agree, there should be something put in there that. Addresses potential impact. Offsite impact, is that how you put it?
Yeah.
And Jeff, is that?
Yeah, I I'm I'm letting Joseph uses uh, word magic here, which is pretty good so far.
Yeah, a lot of that traffic has really gone up after they paved cottonwood.
Yeah.
And we knew it was going to.
Yeah.
Ready, yeah, an issue.
Even if we didn't have this development at all, it'd still be an issue that we have to work on, so.
I guess we wanna probably specify when it has to occur. And I mean, for me, I guess it would generally be at uh, subdivision, you know, subdivision.
Maybe it's at the uh, the first preliminary plat or at first subdivision.
Yeah, yeah, I'd say, yeah, I guess depending upon how we, what subdivision, I'd say, yeah. As part of the subdivision um. Upon subdivision app, upon subdivision application. And then we could just, we would basically trigger it when they do their first subdivision submittal.
Can we specify for high traffic? Times of the year, like. Peak summer or something.
You know, that's something that we, I mean, I obviously discussed many times when they were doing traffic studies here and we're going, what are they doing? Um, they didn't even pick a holiday weekend and they did the intersection of. Twenty four and three oh six. Come on, seriously, guys? I mean, you know, they do when they want to do it. I hate to say it.
Well, that was, that was actually um.
Well, that was, that was actually intentional because of school traffic and they had to do it during the school let out and during September, they didn't want to do it in the summer because that's when the regular traffic.
And that, so they, they're. For some, for some reason, there's logic to their madness. And that's the best way I can put it because it never made any sense to me and we, we had to. Deal with that ourselves as town. We just, that's the way we had to, we had to suck it up and just say, they're doing it at the wrong time.
Yeah, you know, ultimately, when you have studies and traffic studies or any other study done, you know, if, if the board doesn't deem it to be reasonably done or done via, you know, acceptable, accepted practices, you can just reject the results, not, yeah. So I think ultimately for anything that a developer submits to you. You have to look to make sure it was done properly and. Way the results based upon, you know, what's been done. So I don't, I mean, I don't, I don't think we need to get into details. You need to hire a qualified traffic engineer and you need to. Do the study appropriately and they just support when they did it and why they did it at that time, right?
And that would be subject to our regular development review.
Yes.
Entails professional, our professional review, our engineers looking at it, providing comments that the applicant would then need to address before we can move on.
Okay. Anything else? Board that you want, you think needs to be added that we're missing? I think that covers everything P and Z had. Covers everything I think staff recommended. Any other thoughts?
Get it on one page.
I have one.
Go.
The trails board has always requested. Input prior to. Acceptance of subdivisions.
That's, that's a part of our, our development review there, there.
And there was a mention of a link linking up to, I can't remember the trail that goes out that way. Yeah.
I guess the one staff recommendation that wasn't addressed is clarifying the unit count to include ADUs.
Oh, that's right.
And now it's silent, developing agreement is silent on whether any user included or not.
So, yeah, that's fine.
Because didn't we go, didn't we decide on one, one eleven, one ten? The mass, no, one oh one was. Right, that's what it was. And I think that's. Acceptable. I remember that number.
I'll just make a quick comment, just that, that my, my percentages are, are based on the one oh one. Because those ADUs are not general units for sale, they're owned by that particular home. And so I can't. Incorporate those into my plan because they don't belong to me. Does that make sense?
So it doesn't, what you're saying, they'd be non-inclusive into the maximum number is what you're saying?
I'm saying that, yeah, for, for my planning purposes, having it said that one oh one, but allowing the use by right that exists in the code to have an ADU for those units. Actually, the, the, my plan calls for ADUs at certain points on certain larger lots. But the code may allow. Lots more ADUs.
If they'll fit.
Yeah. So I just.
So. So board, do you want, is there a cap that you want to put on that?
Yes.
And, and logic.
Well, maybe we can ask. How many, how many, how many units do you plan to be eligible for an ADU? I think right now it's, it's nine. Where they have an appropriate amount, they were, they basically have the extra parking space. That's the thing.
Yeah. See, it's not a large, it's not a, wow, we're just gonna scrape it in all ADUs, you know what I'm saying? Because there's not that many units that are going to have that kind of. Property available.
Somebody buys a house in this thing that isn't one of these lots, but it's an R three lot that, actually, I don't know if it's a use by right for an ADU in our free lot.
Use by right on per single family primary unit, you can have an ADU. So apartments, you can't have, if you're a apartments, can't have ADUs.
Can have ADUs. Yeah, the single family homes would be the only ones qualify.
Could be nineteen, yeah, currently. And this is, this is a.
These are on your single family homes.
That's ones all in the first phase.
And actually, and in our current, our current draft, so that's, this is, yeah, the, the number is twenty two.
That would add to more parking and more traffic, I assume that, if there was nineteen.
Yes, I think, well, actually, when the traffic, when our traffic study was done, it, it was done based on a hundred and fourteen dwelling units, they included the ADUs that were shown in the plan. And. And then there was a COVID modifier, there was all this, they accounted, they accounted for all that traffic in the potential total. That one fourteen, sorry.
Sounds good, one fourteen. So one oh one was the number of homes or unit or. Let's back up.
Yep.
Yeah. And then, yeah, I, I don't know the word for it or how I want to put it, it's what, eleven o'clock, I don't care. But only. Thirteen then, because it was one oh one, am I correct?
Yeah, yes, it was.
Yes.
And I, I guess I'm just, maybe it's too detailed, but if, if the developer builds the single family homes and not the ADUs. Then we're starting to have to regulate.
Yes.
Individual homeowners that come in for an ADU permit.
Seeing that's.
Some point in the future and then referencing back to the developing.
See, and that's where, that's where I kind of have an issue with that.
I, I think that the simple way to achieve it is if you want to say. Hundred one, single family units, up to thirteen. Yeah, up to thirteen ADUs, then the, 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 the homes that are not on in the plan, including ADU, will have to be deed restricted to eliminate their right to have ADU. And that'll have to be part of the sales process, so that there.
Could be built into the sale of the home.
Yeah.
Regardless, you just get thirteen eighty years somewhere.
Yeah.
And it's up to the developer to decide where, and as long as they fit on the property appropriately.
So we're sticking with that thirteen, that, that makes sense. Okay, yeah, one fourteen maximum.
What I hear though is maybe say a hundred and one. Plus thirteen.
Thirteen.
ADUs because the, the one oh one is the figuring for some of the percentage of the other. The mathematics.
Thank you, Joel.
Thank you.
Cause that's kind of where we were, we were at the one oh one and then we were talking about nine, eleven, whatever. Anything else, trustees? Okay, so the question now. First item. Here someone. Tells me what I need to do. And so Gina, you will be excluded from this vote. Hey, thank you. Correct, Jeff?
Correct.
Thank you. Okay. Okay, so this is not approving. The annexation. We clear on that? This is showing that it meets the criteria. Correct, Jeff?
That's right.
Okay.
Making sure that it's, it's eligible for annexation.
So this item is, should the board of trustees approve the adoption of resolution number twenty five, series twenty twenty two, entitled. A resolution making certain findings of fact regarding the proposed annexation of parcels of land to the town of Unavista, Colorado. Known as the Stackhouse Annexation Number One and Number Two.
Yeah. Clarification, I think there is a, an amended resolution number twenty five sent that. Included a timeline on which the applicant and.
Town. Didn't we see that?
I'm agreeing. Catherine sent it in.
Oh, it's an email.
To the board and so basically, yeah, section four is revised to add a fifteen day. Deadline to have the annexation agreement and the development agreement signed and delivered by the applicant after the zoning ordinance is approved.
Got you, okay.
We wanted to make sure we have a deadline to get this done by.
Okay, so thank you, Joseph. So, so it would be.
Be as amended.
As amended.
Resolution twenty five.
Yeah, okay. Thank you, Paula. Thank you, Jeff. And Joseph. I would entertain a motion to approve, deny?
I'll make that motion to approve resolution number twenty five as amended.
Second.
Second phase. Further discussion. Roll call vote. Oh, I'm sorry, did you have something?
On this, we're just voting whether they're eligible.
Right. This, okay, yep, make sure that they propose annexation, add a, 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 certain facts, findings of fact regarding, so in other words, it shows that they qualify.
Okay.
Anything else? We'll call vote.
That's a good point. Just a one more note, I should, I should have mentioned it, that also approves the annexation of unit and development. Annexation agreement and the development agreement, which are exhibits to the resolution.
Got you.
It would be with the amendments proposed by the board. Thanks, Joel, appreciate that.
And so it would be amended with the.
So you're finding that it's eligible.
Yep.
Subject to the provisions of the annexation agreement and the development agreement as the board recommended amendments.
Amendments, yeah, so. I will, you amend your motion.
Thank you.
Oh, second.
Your second, thank you, Joel, Jeff, everybody involved. Are we clear now?
Still doesn't have anything to do with the zoning.
No, those are down. Those are down, if you look, the next three items will start addressing other specifics.
As a note, though, the, the development agreement does conclude provisions that contemplates an R three zoning. It doesn't mean that you have to approve the R three zoning with the zoning ordinance, but if you approve this. Prove the development agreement that has, that contemplates the three zoning. It's kind of incongruous to not approve the zoning ordinance later. So they're kind of tied together ultimately. This is, it's, it's part of the way the annexation law works.
Just, I was gonna say it's statute and we got nothing to do with it.
Yeah, I mean, there's a lot of ways to skin the cat, but this is probably the best one, unfortunately.
And another maybe way to. Well, to pass it. Zoning ordinance is different than R three, then, then a lot of it becomes. Useless language because it wouldn't be allowed in any lower zoning district that we have.
Got you.
Right, and so we would have done a lot of thinking about amendments that.
And Alex would back off.
Right, right. And so, you know, ultimately, yeah, and ultimately, the developer, Alex, has the option then to basically, well, I don't agree to that condition. And could withdraw the zoning, the petition for annexation and terminate the process if he decides he wants to do that. So it generally doesn't make a lot of sense to, I mean, you're still, you still have the authority to make a decision as you want when it comes to the vote on the zoning ordinance, but. This is all now kind of set up with the contemplation that we're going to be doing R three zoning, subject to those restrictions that you just talked about.
Roll call vote.
Trustee face. Yes. Trustee Rogue.
Yes.
Trustee Swisher.
No, I don't agree with the R three zoning. I believe it's fantastic idea, wrong location.
Trustee Gloke.
Yes.
I chose the vote passed three one.
It doesn't need four votes.
Yeah, we need to this, you have your five voting members, you need three to pass.
Okay.
Yes, aim for the annexation ordinance coming up next, you need four for the zoning because of the protests.
Right, right, that's correct. Okay, are we clear on that?
Clear, bud.
Well, you have five and a total of three would be the.
Majority, majority of the voting members, for it's like a regular vote, like for anything.
Yeah.
And, and then the protest only applies to the zoning decision itself, and so you need four for the zoning decision itself. Even though they're related and intertwined.
Only by blood.
I didn't write the laws, it's nineteen sixty five act, it's been a while. It's written a long time ago.
Always, I'll put a lot of heart and soul into this.
Okay, so Paula, you got everything? Got that one, alrighty. So next. Should the board of trustees approve the adoption of ordinance number ten, series twenty twenty two, entitled. In nor, in ordinance of the town of Unavista, Colorado, annexing to the town of Unavista, Colorado by serial annexation. Certain real property known as the Stackhouse Annexation Number One.
This is a purely legislative act, it's purely within your discretion whether or not to approve it, it's not applying criteria, it's whether or not you think it's a good deal for the town or not a good deal for the town.
Gina, trust involved in.
Allowed to vote on this too.
And this is the flagpole. This is the.
Yeah, this is step one.
But this is, this is the flagpole.
Right, and then this is actual property.
This is basically the exact same way we did Sangre de Cristo. You had to do the one first before you could do the second one.
Correct.
That all makes sense?
So you do these votes here after, is it, if it's a no, then we're done.
Right, right, right. Yeah, you have to have this one prior to the other one. Does that all make sense? Okay, I would entertain a motion to approve or deny?
I'll make the motion that we approve. Resolution or ordinance number ten, series twenty twenty two.
Thank you.
Second.
Second row. Further discussion. Roll call vote, please.
Trustee bank? Yes. Trustee LaCretzi?
No.
Trustee Rogue?
Yes.
Trustee Swisher?
No.
Trustee Gloke?
Yes.
Okay, so that annex in the flagpole. That's three oh six. Correct?
That's correct.
Got that? Okay, two vote. Okay, next one, should the board of trustees approve adoption of ordinance number eleven, series twenty twenty two, entitled in ordinance of the town of Unavista, Colorado, annexing. To the town of Unavista, Colorado by serial annexation, certain real property known as Stackhouse Annexation Number Two. So this is the actual property.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number eleven.
Thank you.
Series twenty twenty two.
I'll second it.
Second phase. Further discussion. Roll call vote.
Trustee bank?
Yes.
Trustee LaCretzi?
No.
Trustee Rogue?
Yes.
Trustee Swisher?
No.
Trustee Gloke?
Yes.
Should the board of trustees approve adoption of ordinance number twelve, series twenty twenty two, entitled in ordinance of the town of Unavista, Colorado. Zoning newly annexed property known as the Stack, Stackhouse Annexation Numbers One and Two. This one, Jeff requires the four.
That's right.
Link the motion to adopt ordinance number twelve.
I'll second it.
Further discussion, second row.
Yeah, I'd like to say something. Yeah, this is. This is the last vote and we need to get four for this and. If we don't, then this probably won't happen. And I really feel like this is something that the town really needs. I think it's going to bring. Housing, which we desperately need here. I think it's gonna. You know, Alex is gonna work with the housing trust and localizations really create things that are affordable. And we just spent three hours talking about this and I feel like I'm all of a sudden surprised that this might not go. So I don't know why I was here for three hours if this doesn't go through. So it's. So it's. I just. Want to, you know, I'm just thinking about this from, from my perspective, you know, I've lived here for seven years. I can't, I've. You know, I don't have. The means to purchase a house right now and I know a lot of people that are being pushed out of this town because there, it's hard to rent here. And it's hard to have a house here, so. I really, you know, it, it may not be exactly what we all want, but I think it's going to do a lot of good for this town, so. I just wanted to say a little bit about that.
I have a comment I'd like to make also. For several years, this property has been in the three mile plan. This property has been in the three mile plan, it's been in the desired area of growth. And it's been in the municipal service area. So it shouldn't come as a surprise that it will be developed in some way soon. There's a chance for it to help with our overall housing supply. And deliver approximately sixty-four apartments. Or forty-eight apartments. Uh, which can house essential workers. Otherwise, it will become two to three large houses with wells and septics. And it won't be used for affordable housing at all. This seems like a lost opportunity to do something good. Affordable housing requires density. Multi-family, two floors, public open spaces versus private yards. Um, land cost is always gonna be a major component of creating affordable housing. To achieve affordability requires R three zoning and proximity to existing infrastructure. So that's it, I, I want this to pass. I think it is for the good of our community and we're giving up a. A good opportunity here. If we, if we don't pass it.
I'll, 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 I'll say something if that's okay. So. There's lots of reasons why I think this is trouble. You know, we passed code changes earlier, couple, a month ago, we have carbonite, the opportunity infill, I agree one hundred percent. We definitely need more housing, but I just think unfortunately, this was the wrong place to pick. I think when we talk about community, though, we have community, though, this is currently in. County. A lot of those people that live there participate in all different aspects of town. And I think there's been tons of comments and the petition and. A ton of voices coming forward asking for. Consideration um about their side of it and. Not one person besides the developer has come forward saying they want this to happen from in town. Um, at least not to my knowledge. I have doubts that this will be. What we believe would be affordable. Um, based off of. Well. Seeing how most things are, I think there's. Tons of questions, um, and unanswered. Details in this plan that leave us vulnerable. The fact that. Apartments come. Part two of this instead of first, when that's the primary reason, it's a big concern, so it's obviously secondary and in, in this whole. Project, and that could be, and if we're using facing, feeding west, which it sounds like, you know, there's. They're, they're quite busy, I'd hope that they can churn out a ton, I have faith that they can, but at the same time. How long could those apartments be put out there for, you know, how long will we be waiting for the, the majority of what we wanted this thing to, to be used for? You know, I, I don't take this idea of annexation lightly, I do believe that. Deciding on what we do tonight sets a precedent. And it was mentioned actually in public comment that, you know. Everybody might want to go sell different pieces of land and, and turn, and, you know, I understand town will grow, but. There's lots of opportunity for development in town currently. Um, and I think we should be focusing on that versus pushing out. I do understand the reason why this was done and I appreciate the thought behind it. You know, like I said, I, I agree, we need housing, but I just don't think this is the right place, and just because an opportunity comes beyond, be. Upon us. Um, I don't always think every opportunity that's there is always worth pursuing. Um, I don't want to make a decision based out of fear of not enough homes, I understand we need more homes. But I just don't think this is the right place for those, especially with. How this was a R one, if this was talked about as an R two, I could have probably been on board with that, but it was pushed to R three. Um, I understand R two has no apartment buildings included in it, but maybe there could have been a way we could have figured something out. Um, so I, I. I understand the board's desire and I understand we sat here for three hours, but that's our jobs. That's what we do, we're supposed to be doing that, so um. Yeah, that's, that's, that's how I feel about this.
Have you able to make a statement at this point?
No. Other comments, anybody? I'll make one. As this board gets serious about building some housing, you'll go somewhere, but until that happens. You can. You can talk about all the housing you want. So we have a. Motion in a second, roll call vote, please.
Trustee bank?
Yes.
Trustee LaCretzi?
No.
Trustee Rogue?
Yes.
I vote no.
Trustee Gloping?
Yes.
Thank you all very much.
I ask from a staff perspective, a little bit of guidance.
On.
What this.
Well, basically, the zoning, zoning failed. And so that the annexation was conditional upon the zoning. So um, that generally means the annexation. Um, has failed, even though it passed initially, so it doesn't get recorded. Um, and um. That's it.
You know. I, you know, I'm gonna entertain.
Yeah, go ahead, Jeff, you answer that. No. Right, right, yeah, because the annexation is conditional upon the zoning. I'm gonna rather talk offline.
I really got nothing, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn, I'm sorry. Thank you, I have a motion, can I have a second?
For what?
Adjournment.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
We got a second and a motion, all in papers, the eye.
Alright.